Call the meeting to order. Jennifer, any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
So motions adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Motion second to adopt the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Need approval of the minutes of December 12, 2013, or any changes or additions? Need to know those at this time.
No approval.
Motion second to approve the minutes of December 12, 2013, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those minutes are now official. Council members, Council Lady Evans, would you like to speak?
Good afternoon. I'm here on the subdivision regs, and I was wondering if I might ask, in lieu of council time here, if at the beginning of the subdivision regulation discussion, Carter and I and Mr. White, who spent a lot of time on this issue, could just address the commission about, you know, the work that we put into with the commission, I mean, the staff to get to this point, if that works for you. Otherwise, I can talk now.
Yeah, I'll honor that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other council members? Council Lady Bennett?
We're having a hard time hearing right here.
Council Lady Bennett, she in the audits? Any council members, any audits wishing to speak? Please let me know at this time. Seeing none, we'll move on. Any items for deferral, Jennifer?
Yes, there are a few items for deferral. The first is 4A, 2014 CP 005002, East Nashville Community Plan Amendment. A request to amend the East Nashville Community Plan 2006 update by changing the land use policy from residential low-medium density policy to a T3 neighborhood maintenance policy for property located at 1414 Rosebank Avenue. Staff recommendation is to defer this item to the February 13, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. Item 4B, 2014 SP 003001, 1414 Rosebank. A request to rezone from R10 to SPR zoning for property located at 1414 Rosebank Avenue to permit up to 32 residential dwelling units. Staff recommendation is to defer to the February 13, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. Item 9, 2014 SP 002001, Stadium Lofts. A request to rezone from IR to SPMU zoning for properties located at 1102 and 1138, 3rd Avenue North and 1121, 2nd Avenue North, to permit a mixed-use development. It is staff recommendation to defer this item to the January 23, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. Item 11, 2014 Z 002PR 001, 603 26th Avenue North. A request to rezone from RS5 to MULA zoning for property located at 603 26th Avenue North. Staff recommendation is to defer to the January 23, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. Item 15, 2014 Z 006PR 001. A request to rezone from AR2A to RS15 zoning for property located at 6541 Redmond Lane. Staff recommendation is to defer this item to the January 23, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. Item 18, 2013 SP 048001, Hillwood Court at Nashville West. A request to rezone from R40 and RS40 to SPMR zoning for properties located at 6809, 6813, and 6817 Charlotte Pike to permit up to 64 dwelling units. Staff recommendation is to defer, pardon me, staff recommendation is to defer to the February 13, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. I'm sorry you couldn't hear me. Those items again for deferral are 4A, 4B, 9, 11, 15, and 18.
The commissioners, you've heard the request for those items to be deferred. Is there a motion? Motion second to defer items 4A, 4B, 9, 11, 15, and 18, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? They have now been deferred. Items that she's going to read on consent, we have some requests to speak, that we keep name, we somehow mark whether you're in favor or opposed, whether you want to speak or not speak. So she's going to read those out. If there's item that she reads on consent and you want to speak to the commission about it, then speak up at that time. Thank you. Go ahead, Jennifer. Items on consent.
As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. As a notice to the public, the items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the The first item on the consent agenda is item number two, 2005 P 008003, Harpeth Village Zaxby's. This is a request to revise the preliminary plan and for final site plan approval for a portion of the Harpeth Village Commercial PUD Overlay District on property located at 8,000 Highway 100 to permit the construction of a 3,652-foot square foot restaurant, and the staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number three, 2014 CP 005001, East Nashville Community Plan Amendment. This is a request to amend the East Nashville Community Plan 2006 update by changing the land use policy from office and community center policy to mixed use and community center policy for various properties located along Gallatin Pike between Gillick Street and McAlpine Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number five, 2014 CP 007001. This is a West Nashville Community Plan Amendment. A request to amend the West Nashville Community Plan 2009 update by changing the community character policy from T4 urban, neighborhood-evolving, and conservation policies to a special policy area for property located at 602 33rd Avenue North, and staff recommendation is to approve. Okay, thank you. Item number 7A, 2013 SP 046001, Cornerstone Church. A request to rezone from R10, RS10, and RS20 to SPMU for properties located at 726 Old Hickory Boulevard and Boyd's Hilltop Drive unnumbered to permit up to a 130-bed assisted living facility along with an existing religious institution and its associated uses and facilities. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item 7B, 10879P 001, Hickory Hills Ridge North. A request to cancel a portion of the residential PUD overlay district and amend the remaining portion of the overlay located at Boyd's Hilltop Drive unnumbered and Nesbit Lane unnumbered, zoned RS20 and R10 to permit 35 single-family lots, replacing 78 single-family lots. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item 8, 2014 SP 001001, 60th Avenue Cottages. A request to rezone from CS to SPR zoning for property located at 1208 60th Avenue North to permit up to 60 residential dwelling units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 12, 2014 Z 003PR 001. A request to rezone from CN to R6 zoning for property located at 1421 9th Avenue North. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item 13, 2014 Z 004PR 001. A request to rezone from RS5 to RM15A zoning for various properties located along the south side of East Trinity Lane. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item 14, 2014 Z 005PR 001. A request to rezone from IR to MUNA for properties located within the Phillips-Jackson Street Redevelopment District and the Germantown Historic Preservation Overlay District. That's good, my back was getting sore here too. Located at 1318, 1322, and 1326 6th Avenue North zoning. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item 17, 2014 Z 011PR 001. A request to rezone from R6 to RS3.75 for property located at 1310 Fatherland Street. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 19, 2001 UD 002005, Music Row UDO Crescent Bluebird. A request for a modification to the Music Row UDO district standards for property located at 1205, 1309, 1211, 1213, 1303, 1305, and 1307 Division Street to permit up to 10.75 feet of additional building height along the Division Street frontage where 65 feet at the build-to line and a 1.5 to 1 vertical to horizontal height control plane is the maximum permitted height. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number 20, 4683P 002, Metropolitan Airport Center Raceway. A request to revise the preliminary plan and for final site plan approval for a portion of the Metropolitan Airport Center Commercial PUD Overlay District on property located at 577 Donaldson Pike, Zone CS, to permit the construction of a 2,822-square-foot automobile convenience facility. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item 21, 2014 S 002001, Colbertson View. A request for concept plan approval to create 23 clustered lots on properties located at 6198 Colbertson Road and Tapaco Lane unnumbered, approximately 2,000 feet east of Newhillsville Pike, zoned RS10 and partially located within the Flood Plain Overlay District. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including a condition to add a Greenway Conservation easement as required by Metro Parks and the subdivision regulations with development plan and final plat approval. Finally, item number 22, exclusion of including parent companies and subsidiaries of American Safety Casualty Insurance Company, American Southern Insurance Company, Bond Safeguard Insurance Company, and Lexon Insurance Company from providing surety bonds for one year pursuant to Section 6-1.2. D of the Metro subdivision regulations. So to go over those numbers again.
Well, Jennifer, let's do this this way and then read the numbers.
Okay.
It looks like that item 1, 6, 7, 10A and B will be heard of public hearing. Is that correct?
1, 6, 10A and 16.
15 was...
No, pardon me, 16.
16.
Yeah.
Okay, would you read the first, what those, item 1, that's a subdivision amendment. Item 6?
Item 6 is the text amendment on chickens in residential properties and removing the sunset provision.
Be sure, the audience, that you listen to what's going to be heard on public hearing. So first from the subdivision, the regulation amendments, and number 6 is the text amendment, and 10A and B?
Are regarding a rezoning and cancellation of the Lindsay Heights Commercial PUD Overlay District. These are both at 7435 Old Hickory Boulevard.
Okay, Cornerstone Church.
Thank you, Cornerstone Church. And then item 16 will be heard. This is a request to apply a historic bed and breakfast overlay district for property located in Woodland and Waverly.
Okay. For the audience, those are the only four items, unless someone speaks up right now, that's going to be heard on public hearing. So would you read out the ones, Jennifer, then, that are on consent for the commissioners?
So the items on consent are 4A, 4B, 9, oh, pardon me, I'm reading deferral.
Deferral, yeah.
Sorry. Okay, items on consent, 2, 3, 5, 7A, and 7B, which that's actually Cornerstone.
No, that's, Cornerstone's not. Cornerstone's on consent. It's 10 that's on.
Right, but you, we had earlier mislabeled one of the ones that's on public hearing as Cornerstone, but Cornerstone is on consent. Okay.
Let's be clear now.
So the items on consent are 2, 3, 5, 7A, 7B, 8, 12, 13. So I think I've just heard from somebody that wants to pull item 13. Okay.
We don't have a request to speak on 13.
Do you need?
Who wants it pulled, please stand up. Okay, then pull item 13.
Item 14 remains on consent. Cornerstone is on consent, because it's...
I just put in a request to speak.
To speak on that one?
You wish to speak in opposition to Cornerstone?
Yes, I do.
Okay, then pull 7A and B.
Chairman, should I begin from the beginning again on the numbers?
Yeah, I want to be sure we got it clear.
Okay, so...
And the audience, please listen to...
Sure.
And we'd need more time on this 10, the Lindsay thing.
It's already been pulled off consent, so it's going to be heard.
Okay, what's that mean?
It's going to receive a public hearing.
Oh, well, I was hoping we were going to have some time to talk about it before it went that far.
No, I think now's the time we're settling the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda then, unless somebody requests to pull another one off. Item number 2, 3, 5, 8. Item number 12, 14, 17, 19, 20, 21, and 22.
Okay, Commissioner, you've heard the ones that are beyond consent. And for the audience, the ones that will be heard on public hearing are items 1, 6, 7A and B, 10A and B, 13 and 16. Is there a motion for the commissioners to approve the items on consent? Motion second, all in favor? Motion carries. We are now ready for item number 1. Clear something out, it's out anyway.
My name is Carrie Logan. This is item number 1.
Wait a minute, that's good. You would go out quietly, please. Go ahead, Carrie.
This is item number 1. These are proposed amendments to the subdivision regulations. These amendments were deferred from the December 12, 2013 Planning Commission meeting. And since the December 12 meeting, we've been working with a variety of stakeholders, both from the community side and the development community, and we believe that we have consensus with the majority of the stakeholders. We've been receiving a lot of positive feedback on the proposed changes. So the summary of the changes, and the biggest change is that since December 12, the standard for lot frontage and lot size has been changed from 70% of the average of the surrounding lots, or the smallest lot, whichever is less, whichever is smallest, to whichever is greater. And so we would run the same analysis, 70% of the surrounding lots, and then look at what the smallest lot is within the surrounding lots, and then the minimum lot size and lot frontage for a proposed subdivision would have to be greater than that number for staff to take it through an administrative process if it were a two-lot subdivision. We've also created alternative process for subdivisions that may be able to create harmonious development through, that don't meet that standard. But those subdivisions would need to come to the Planning Commission, and would have a public hearing with public notice, and people would be able to speak on each of these items. In conjunction with that, we also added a section that would allow applicants to propose and the Planning Commission to approve conditions that would make proposed subdivisions more harmonious with the surrounding development. And some of those conditions are listed there, the identification of building envelopes, build-to lines, setbacks, building and garage orientation, easement locations, and maximum building height. And then we've also created a separate process for infill subdivisions in designated historic districts, which is now defined in the subdivision regulations. The majority of questions that we received through the online comment form, which has been up and running since last meeting, was a question about increasing the percentage of the average from 70% to something greater than 70%. And we think that this has really been addressed by the revision to whatever is greater in the additional language, and that there's not a need to increase that percentage. We've also received questions about horizontal property regimes, duplexes, and single-family structures. And the subdivision regulations and the analysis that staff is doing for these proposed subdivisions is a comparison of properties, parcels and lots. It's not a comparison of structures themselves, and so we felt that that wasn't something that needed to be included in the proposed amendments. Staff's recommendation is to approve the proposed amendments. They have been posted online, various drafts, as we've been working through stakeholder feedback, and emailed to the commissioners. And we do recommend that the amendments become effective for all future applications, and that applications currently under review would be evaluated under the existing subdivision regulations.
Thank you, Carrie. This item is open for public hearing, and it was requested by Council Lady Evans. She will speak. Councilman Todd, Attorney White, and I see Council Lady Allen has come in if you'd like to speak, so, and then we'll open it up for the audience.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, I'm Carter Todd, the councilperson for one of the two districts in Green Hills, and appreciate all your patience back at the December meeting. That was a long meeting. I think one of the things Commissioner Haynes said was really smart, and that was, you know, these are the kind of problems a city wants to have. We're lucky to have, to be a boomtown, and so it's a struggle to get all this done, but I do think the proposal, the regime that Planning has come up with, where we divided into evolving neighborhoods and maintenance neighborhoods, makes a lot of sense. And we need to have infill, but it needs to be in the evolving neighborhoods near our major corridors. That makes complete sense. And we need to, you know, be more protective with the established, you know, maintenance neighborhoods. That makes sense. The big issue is how you decide what's going to go on in the established neighborhoods. And I think what's good about the proposal that Director Sloan and his staff have come up with is it doesn't really give either side everything they want. It's a true compromise. And I've talked to Tom White and Roy Dale and others, and Council Lady Evans and Council Lady Allen, and we're all getting some of the things we want, we're all not getting some of the things we want. And so it's a balance, it's a good compromise, and I think it's important that you all adopt it as it's presented, because if you start to tweak it, you might take out something that's really important to Mr. White, or take out something really important to Council Lady Evans. And so I think it's been negotiated, it's fair, it's not perfect, but it gives both sides what they need. So I would urge you to adopt the regulations as presented. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would also like to urge you to adopt the regulations as presented tonight. There was an enormous amount of work that went into this, and I realize that subdivision regs probably was not on the planning staff's work plan for 2013. So for people who think government can't be flexible, that, here you are. And so I really want to say very publicly for, I mean, the many people I know who watch Channel 3, which is to thank Carrie Logan for her extraordinary work, and her patience, and her time, and her professionalism. We're very, very lucky to have her working for us. And also Doug Sloan for the same attributes. Doug and I have had many spirited discussions over the years over very many topics. He's one of my favorite people to work with in the metropolitan government, and I think the work that he's done, they've done here on this, is a case in point. There are some people here from the public tonight. I think, for the most part, everyone is pretty supportive of what we have come up with. It's not to absolutely everybody's liking, nothing ever is, but I think it does a number of things. It brings better certainty, greater certainty, to our neighborhoods. I think, most important, it puts Green Hills in the midtown area, which, as we all know, is a very, very, very hot real estate market, on the same playing field as other parts of town, and I think that's important. Fairness is something that we all strive through for in government. So I think that's another thing. It does, I think, address the duplex issue, which has come up from time to time, as not being part of subdivision regs as well. So I'd like to just thank you for your time, ask you to support this, and look forward to your discussion.
Good afternoon. I'm Berkeley Allen, Councilmember for the 18th District, which is in the midtown area, which is, Councilmember Evans referred to as one of the areas that is under the old land use policy regulations and was getting a different sort of treatment. So I appreciate the effort that has gone into providing a compatibility test for those parts of town. I think that compatibility test is a fair one. I was one of the ones who was asking for a higher percentage above 70%, but at Carrie's urging, I have gone through the numbers for several different instances, and I believe that by making the comparison between 70% of the average of the five lots on either side, or the smallest lot, whichever is greater, I think that change to whichever is greater makes a very significant difference. It still allows for lots to be subdivided. I think it provides some opportunity for infill development, but does it in a fair way that still preserves the character of the neighborhood, and I think that's what we've all agreed is important. I think last month's meeting showed that your gut feeling is if it doesn't feel like it belongs there, then the regulation should substantiate that, and I believe that this group does. I appreciate the work that went into this. I also appreciate the suggestion to sort of put a hold on things until we had figured out what we want to do, and with that, I would ask you to support these regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney White?
Chairman McLean, members of the commission, my name is Tom White. I'm an attorney with Tun Hentgen &amp; White. I appreciate this opportunity to address the commission at the front of this discussion. I concur totally with the comments made by Council Lady Emily Evans, Carter Todd, Berkeley Allen, and want to say at the front end a significant number of acknowledgements. Those council members clearly put in an incredible amount of time since we were here in December. I also want to add that there were seven district council people that wrote letters down here asking in December to defer this matter to allow this type of dialogue to take place. I've spoken to every one of them over the last few weeks. They're aware of what's taking place, they're supportive, they're appreciative of the time to get this resolution worked out. With respect to people that participated, Brent Craig has just absolutely been the Energizer Bunny. He has been every place, everywhere, with institutional information. And in addition, John Brittle and Roy Dale have also been part of that institutional memory, and I wanted to thank them for that input. Finally, on the acknowledgements, Carrie, Logan, Doug Sloan, the staff, they've hardly been just scriveners here. I can't tell you the number of times they've met early and late with any group that wanted to talk to them, and it was absolutely amazing, the input that people got back from them, and how it got to the process that it did right now. As an attorney for the builder development community, I can assure you that it wasn't everything that we wanted, much like it wasn't for anybody else. But as Carter and Emily and Berkeley said, it's a package where I think it's clear the A package where it should be the staff recommendation and approved by this commission. It's also amazing when you sit down on an issue this complex, and I'm dealing with people that deal with zoning issues constantly, to whom I'm addressing this right now. These issues are complex, and it took a great deal of time and effort, but it's amazing that people sit down with an open mind and try to figure out not just their agenda, but some objectivity. It results in a resolution like this one did today. It was absolutely startling. And it's like every other settlement, somebody thinks they gave too much on each side, that's generally where it ought to be. So at the meeting in December, what everyone heard at the front of this room was that everybody was supportive of, quote, "good infill." The question was, what was it? I think we've given you a good roadmap for that. We'd urge you to support the staff recommendation exactly as it is, without any deviation. Appreciate your courtesies. We can't do this globally for every single person, but the efforts of the people that have been here have been for huge stakeholders on every side, and we urge you to approve it. Thank you for the courtesies and the chance to address.
Thank you. I'll open the microphone up to anyone in wishing to speak and support.
Pete Horton, 726 Benton. I really applaud the work of the council members that brought this up, and the staff that has worked on it, particularly as a recent past president of Woodland and Waverly neighborhood, particularly like the idea of stressing harmonious discussions rather than... particularly like the idea of stressing harmonious discussions rather than sitting back and getting into so much hateful controversy. Particularly like the emphasis on properties rather than just structures, and we're very thankful that you throw a bone to the historic neighborhoods, and they're going to get a little separate discussion and not be thrown in the pot with every other. Just one final thing, it'd be nice if this didn't have to happen over the holidays, because most neighborhoods have not had meetings, people don't know about it, and I just happened to stumble in on another issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Mina Johnson. I live at 6600 Fox Hollow Road. I'm here to support a subdivision regulation amendment in regards to infill subdivision. I'm really happy with the latest change on 352D. Although I'd be happier if the number is 80%, 90% or average, but considering the new lot have to meet zoning standard, so 70%, greater than 70% of the average or a smallest lot strikes right balance. My concern is 352F. This section gives commissioners to override mathematical formula to determine compatibility. You know, of course, the mathematical formula alone cannot determine compatibility, but sometimes size matters. If the proposed lots are drastically smaller than surrounding lots, it doesn't look right. And, you know, I understand this section will give some flexibility to the commissioners, but I'd like to request when and if the commissioner decides to use this nuclear option to grant infill development. Just think about the dividing new lot will achieve maintaining a neighborhood maintenance policy goal rather than not dividing it. So, that's what I would like to think about it, when you grant failed mathematical formula test. And overall, I'm very happy with the new amendment language, and really want to thank staff for the hard work, and also commissioners. Last commissioner meeting took six hours. It was hard for me to watch entire meeting on YouTube. Not imagining how hard it was for you, and I thank for your dedication and service.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Charlotte Cooper, 3409 Tremble Road, District 34. As president of my local neighborhood association, the Casman Hobbs Neighborhood Association, and the honor of being the president of the Green Hills Neighborhood Association, I want to thank you for the opportunity to voice my personal support for the rewrite of the subdivision requirements, regulations. I love older neighborhoods, and I love older houses. I live in an older, stable neighborhood, and my house is 60 years old. These older neighborhoods need protection. My neighborhood certainly needs protection from overzealous developers. I, like many other residents of Nashville, consider these older neighborhoods to be a real gem for the city. Nashville needs these older neighborhoods to maintain the character and diversity that make Nashville a desirable place to live. The rewrite of Section 3-5 infill subdivision offers a great deal more protection than the current infill regulations. Therefore, I ask you to vote yes and approve the amended subdivision regulations. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hey, I'm Tom Cash, 3104 Ackland Avenue. I am the president of Hillsborough Western Neighbors, and I too urge you to vote for these amended subdivision regulations. I was here in December urging you to support comparability and two-tier approach, and was nervous about the way that the regulations were worded then, but with the change of the wording to whichever is greater, we feel a lot more comfortable that the lots that come out of subdivision requests will be comparable with our neighborhood. So, I thank everyone for their wisdom and patience, the patient way that she went about looking at it. And I think this will protect the character of our neighborhood and also promote responsible infill. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Hunter Moore. Thank you for your time. I want to start off by thanking you again for deferring the decision to give more time for feedback and for listening to that process. And I want to also thank the planning staff for providing multiple opportunities for feedback and for making changes to the proposed regulations based on what they heard. This is an important decision, and I appreciate the work they've done. I believe what they've proposed will go a long way in preserving the historic character of our neighborhoods while still allowing for growth. The new regulations for infill provide a reasonable way to decide whether or not a new subdivision is compatible with the character of an established neighborhood. I believe the 70% figure is reasonable. It's my understanding that prior to the current regulations, the rule of thumb had been 90%. So, this is a substantial reduction, but 70% is small enough. I appreciate the planning staff changing the language to whichever is greater for lot size and frontage. This will protect us from lots that are too small. Today, it was the first time I saw 35F that allows for the hearing before the planning commission, so I hadn't really had much time to consider what that meant. I'm not sure what the difference between that and a request for an SP, why there would need to be another hearing, type of hearing established, rather than just using the procedures that already exist when a development is being created that is different than the existing regulations. I do want to say this commission has an important role in how we preserve Nashville's distinct character as we grow. Great cities have personalities. You say New York, Boston, New Orleans, you have an idea, and I think that's true with Nashville. People are what make us Nashville, but also our buildings. Thank you for taking the time to preserve them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Pete Prosser. I'm a part of the Realtor community, who had a lot of interest in this particular subject, talking about these subdivision regulations. I did want to thank the councilpeople, the commission and the staff, Tom White, for the amount of time that it took just to work to come to an understanding with these proposed changes. And I know that it was very intense at the last meeting. I know you worked very late, so we appreciate everyone doing that. On behalf of myself, looking at the regulations and seeing the changes that are proposed, I know it was give and take, and there was a compromise that worked out. And I would like to say that, just as myself personally, not my constituency, but as a Realtor, I would ask that you approve the changes and these regulations as submitted. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak and support? Anyone in the audience in opposition? Seeing that as a motion to close a public hearing.
Salute.
Motion second, close a public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Hunt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, it appears that all the parties have reached an agreement on this particular issue. The staff found that the current compatibility standards strike a balance between the goals of creating opportunities for infill development. So, therefore, I would like, it's time to recommend and move that we approve the staff's recommendation on this issue.
Thank you. For a second, before we move on to the other commissioners?
Second.
Okay. Still want to hear from the other commissioners, but thank you. Philip?
There's not much I can add. I just, kudos to everybody that was involved. The staff just was fantastic in this, and I appreciate all the extra time and consideration and the wisdom that went into the final product. So, I would certainly encourage the other members of the commission to vote for this as is.
Hunter? Could you pull your microphone down? Sometimes I'm having a hard time hearing.
I guess as the planning commission representative on the Historic Zoning Commission, I'd like for the staff to explain to the commission the process for determining compatibility within historic districts. And then also, the Historic Zoning Commission staff had some recommendations or some comments on the current draft. And could you address those, and whether they're included or not included in the most recent?
Sure. We've added a section, since the last changes, we did add a section about designated historic districts, which we have defined in the Chapter 7, in the latest version. And we've included in the designated historic districts all locally adopted overlays and all national register districts, adopted and approved national register districts. And in those sections, we've asked that the historical commission or the Historic Zoning Commission provide a recommendation to the planning commission on whether the development is appropriate with a historical development pattern. One of their requests was to add national register eligible properties and worthy of conservation properties, as well as individually listed properties on the national register. And in looking at that request, we found that the designation of those properties wasn't in a, wasn't through a public vetting process, like a local overlay or like a national register application. And we felt that it was more appropriate to include properties that went through a public vetting process. In addition to individual properties that are on the national register, those are limited to one property and not the surrounding properties. And in those cases, we felt that it was more appropriate that they fall under either of the policy tests, because you'd be comparing them to things that are not historic, adopted historic properties.
Also, just to expand on that, the commission is part of the normal review process, so they can provide comments on any subdivision, and we circulate all subdivisions to them for comments.
Great. Thank you. With that explanation, I support staff recommendation as well.
Stuart?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do appreciate and agree with what everyone has said, and particularly the amount of time it's taken the staff to deal with this. Some of us know how much time the new plan has taken, the next plan for our future, and we do not have a large staff. The commission knows that, commissioners know that. And it's been, I think, pretty amazing how much time and effort the staff has devoted to this. I would like to have a bit more discussion about the subsection F, and hear a little bit more about that. It sounds fairly well limited to me, and not just a wide-open sort of loophole, but I want to hear a little bit more from staff about how that fits in with a renewed emphasis on compatibility and built-out neighborhoods.
Sure. And we looked at a lot of subdivisions, a lot of proposed subdivisions, a lot of subdivisions that people had called the front counter and asked about, and looked at what would make them compatible if they didn't meet the 70% test. And we, from the last version, if they hadn't met the 70% test, they would have always been presented here with a recommendation of disapproval, and they would have needed some sort of variance for them, for the subdivision, even if it was a perfectly reasonable subdivision for that to be approved by the commission. And so, in looking at these, we took a look at state law and what we are charged with looking at for subdivisions. The phrase is harmonious development, and thought about what other types of harmonious development that there could be. If a subdivision does not meet the proposed test, we felt that the process should be that they would come before the planning commission with public notice and a public hearing, so that the community would have an opportunity to speak on whether they felt that this proposed subdivision was harmonious or not. And then added the conditions section of some of the things that could be included to give the community and the development community a sense of making a proposed subdivision more harmonious.
Okay. Does that mean that the, these concepts and conditions, such as the development pattern of the area, the unique geographic and environmental factors, and those others, does this mean by implication that this cannot be applied as generally harmonious unless there is some kind of a finding that some of that is there?
Right. Okay. I believe so. I mean, we would need some sort of other information that's part of the text that's listed there.
Right. So, you can't just say generally harmonious unless something in these other sentences is demonstrated to us?
We had a discussion about this, and we would expect that the commission, if they were operating under this, would make specific findings as to how this is harmonious. Yes.
Well, I like this as a compromise in light of that explanation. I think most people who believe in stable, built-out neighborhoods and wanted to see compatibility put back in, I think most of those folks also get that we are a growing city, and that there is a need to accommodate more folks, and from a standpoint of sustainability, to accommodate folks living closer to other uses besides residential. I don't think this was ever a battle about whether we grew or whether we were going to adapt, change. It was a battle about being careful with what's been so accurately described as a real gem of the city, these neighborhoods that are in fact built out and have, and whose owners and residents have an expectation. So, I think this is a great middle ground, and I appreciate the work.
Jeff?
No comment.
Greg?
I first want to thank the councilmembers, because I know how much effort goes into putting together these types of plans, because you get a lot of emails, a lot of the meetings, especially with advocates and also the developers. You know, being councilman, a prior councilman, you know, firsthand, I realize how much effort that is, and I don't think people realize how much that is. I also want to thank Councilor White for his dedication and compromise. And then the staff, of course, like everybody else has said, especially over the holidays. I know that's hard when everyone has families, and that is a hard thing to do. So, thank you all for doing this, especially under the pressure that was happening. I think, too, just to make a real quick note, that some folks may have felt that it was a government breakdown at the point where we had our meeting. I want to say that I've always, being a political science major and a, really always fascinated with governments, metro government has worked very well. And being a former councilmember and watching how the departments operate, we are very heavy on boards and commissions. Most of our government, if you think about it, is made up of volunteers like you and us. And I want to say that I think that this is a real sign that metro government does work. And it's very fascinating, if you study the way that our structure is set up. I do a lot of interaction with lots of other local governments in Tennessee, and I can tell you that we probably have one of the more efficient operating governments that really does work. And I think that with this compromise, you notice that it worked. Even when there's a lot of pressure, this kind of board and commission, in the way that we're set up, allows for a lot of great public comment, and I think that this is a good example of that. So, I just want to point that out to everybody that, just from my reflection, I'm really proud of not only the councilmembers, the staff, but also the citizens for being patient with us and metro government. And I feel like this is how it's supposed to work. I've seen it where it doesn't work, and it generally ends up in a court, and so, I'm just very proud that metro government has worked. So, I'm very comfortable with the compromise and want to thank all parties. Thank you.
Audrey?
Everybody's on their eloquent time today, so I won't repeat all that, because I agree with all of you. The one thing that was very mundane that I was paying attention to were the language about the alleys. And I think I got it clarified, but just in case you all didn't read that section, if, my understanding is that if there is an existing, built-out, developed alley, then the access for the rear, they would have to use rear and side access via the alley. And then there's some language saying, if it's not, then what you do. And I was a little confused with the sentences to be sure that that's exactly what it said. The English major in me sort of said, "I don't like this sentence, but I'm going to leave it alone." But I felt like we could have put some parallel construction language in there to make sure that that's really clear. I read it saying that you had to have an alley or you couldn't do infill development. So, that's why I was sort of, my antenna were up. Anyway, I think it's fabulous, and I appreciate, especially the holiday hours, everybody took to do this. So, thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I have another question related to the reasonable conditions definition. Examples of Examples of conditions include setback or Build Two designations, maximum building heights, and so on. Some of those are zoning issues, not subdivision reg issues. So it just made me want to ask, and I'm sure you guys have thought through all this, but make sure that within sort of our regulatory authority, we can do that. I'm sure you've looked into it. So that's one question. Second question is that the Historic Zoning Commission has the ability to grant variances to setbacks within the, and maybe other parts of the zoning code. I was just wanting to make sure that this wouldn't necessarily usurp the authority of the Historic Zoning Commission in any way.
Obviously, if it's okay, I'll start with the second question. I think in the way the designated historic district section is worded that requires a recommendation from them, we work fairly closely with them on these subdivisions, especially within historic overlays, locally adopted historic overlays, and that.
Yeah, sorry. Okay. So if it's in one of the districts, then it wouldn't fall under this section. Is that correct? Okay. And then the first question.
Okay. As far as reasonable conditions, yes, we've looked at all of those. And some of these, in talking with the development community, they felt that they were reasonable, that they could, as sort of request, that they be put on their plat so that it could give the neighborhood a sense of a little bit more security in what would be approved with the plat. And so we think that we're okay on both of those.
Okay. And so metro legals, fine with that. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Before we take a vote, I want to thank the council members, especially Council Lady Evans for taking this on and carrying the water for the council. Councilman Todd, Councilman Berkeley, Attorney Wyatt. If you'll recall, just four weeks ago, we were here, we all felt like we were drinking from the firehose at night. And in four weeks, with two major holidays, we've reached compatibility, and I think that that shows the negotiation on both sides was very compatible. And I want to thank the comments from the members that came to the microphone that they gave to the staff, because the staff was off for holidays, but they also worked morning and night, met with anybody that wanted to talk to it. So I think we've reached a good compromise, and there's a motion, a second on the floor, to approve, and I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, that the motion could, would include staff clarifying the existing alley language that was mentioned. It's just a wording thing to make sure that it is existing alley.
So noted.
Right. Mr. Chairman, if I could just make one comment to the council members, because this was a fairly unique process of engaging in a lot of the traditional ways. We received a lot of emails, and we received a lot of normal communication, but we also probably were operating with more social media than ever. Council Lady Evans' Facebook page was extremely helpful in terms of getting feedback, and I would recommend that Council Lady Allen could refrain from sending emails at 8:00 AM on Christmas morning, so. But she was up and working, so we appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Audience, you've heard the results of that. We're now ready for item number six to be heard. Okay, if you'd file out quietly, we'd appreciate it. Go ahead.
I think Bob's trying to usher them out. Here we go. Mr. Chairman, this is item number six on your agenda. This is a request for a text amendment to remove the prohibition of chickens in certain council districts. The prohibition of chickens is actually a provision on the use domesticated hens in certain council districts. Staff is recommending approval. As a little bit of background, BL, ordinance number BL 2011-47 was approved by the council in January of 2012. That ordinance established the domesticated hens use, as well as it established zoning standards for the keeping of domesticated hens in certain zoning districts. That ordinance also modified sections of Title Eight, which Title Eight relates to animals. It modified sections or standards related to the enclosures related to domesticated hens, the keeping of feed, the sanitary conditions for keeping of domesticated hens as well. The discussion around the approval of, or the establishment of domesticated hens as an accessory use, there were a lot of findings that this was beneficial to sustainability and local foods. It improved local health, as well as it was beneficial for, or it had a beneficial impact on the local economic impact, or it had a beneficial local economic impact. Excuse me. This request before the Planning Commission is only related to Title Seventeen. It's not related to Title Eight, or are those standards related to Title Eight, or what the ordinance that the council is currently working with involves with regards to Title Eight. So only the prohibition established in Title Seventeen is what's before the Planning Commission. Just, again, as additional background, that bill or that ordinance established the use domesticated hens. Here's the definition. Essentially, domesticated hens means female chickens that are kept for non-commercial purposes. That ordinance allowed domesticated hens as an accessory use in agricultural zoning districts, as well as R and RS zoning districts. Here's the existing text that was established by that ordinance related to domesticated hens. It provides standards related to the type and number of chickens that can be kept, the location on a lot for keeping the chickens, the setbacks for the enclosures related to chickens, as well as it required permitting for the chickens. That ordinance was amended on third reading at the council, and it established subsection number one, which is prohibited locations. The keeping of chickens was allowed countywide, except for those eight council districts listed in subsection one, unless in those eight council districts you were in the general services district, or you were on certain agricultural or large RS zone lots. This specific text amendment before you today would essentially remove subsection one. It would get rid of the districts in which domesticated hens were prohibited and would allow the keeping of chickens countywide. And that is all that is proposed with this text amendment before the Planning Commission today. In conclusion, staff is recommending approval, as this text amendment would allow those domesticated hens or chickens countywide.
Okay. Thank you. So item is open for public hearing. The applicant will be allowed 10 minutes, and you may keep two minutes back for rebuttal if you would like.
Thank you, commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I really do appreciate the work that you do every day. It is hard to believe it's been two years. It's amazing how that time flies, doesn't it? And I can honestly say that I feel like this is a good piece of legislation. I believe that keeping of hens is a good move for Nashville. It's a very progressive move where people can raise their own food, and it teaches our children where their food basically comes from. And Dwayne has so wonderfully presented you with most of the information, so I'm just going to jump to some basic facts. The opt-out provision was Alfred at the very end, and it was because some folks did not want to be included in it. And I felt like, and looking back on that, it's one of my biggest mistakes as a council member, because the idea was that if they saw what happened in the other districts, and then it wasn't a problem, then they would be totally open to having hens in their neighborhoods. But what I have found is the ones that opted out really just want to keep the same status quo. The problem is, they're not open to the freedom of their neighbors having hens. It also makes it difficulty for the Health Department staff to try to calculate and figure out who's in what district, and it's just an additional step. So I guess basically what I'm going to ask for you is to approve, because I do believe including everyone in Davidson County is a good thing. Talking about figures and facts, I think, are very important. So real quick, let me run through a few things. We have 245 hen permits within the two-year period. 245 permits. So it wasn't this mass rush of people to, "We've got to have hens in our neighborhoods." Let's talk about what was turned in. When I requested from the Health Department the numbers of complaints concerning chickens, whether it was roosters or hens, though roosters are prohibited, there were 280 total complaints. So let me break that down for you. 280 is the gross number, but when I went through the calculations, there were actually 175 complaints in a two-year period across Davidson County. What happened was, someone would call in and complain, and then the next day they would call in and say, "Well, what happened to my call? I want a follow-up." So to me, I'm sorry, but that is one complaint. So when I went through the numbers, it started out at 280, the gross number. The net number came out to 175. So I think the numbers really speak. It has not been a true issue in Davidson County. It has been a positive thing. And also, if you'd like additional information, the interim director for Metro Animal Care Control is here. His name is Spencer Hissam, and he would be happy to answer any questions that you Again, I do request approval of the bill and not a deferral. We heard it in council Tuesday night, and we did have Councilman Bednay requested that it be deferred, and that was voted down on the council floor with a reasonably good vote, 24 to 10. So I'm asking that you honor this and just let Nashville to have the freedom to have hens in Davidson County and countywide. Thank you.
Thank you. You have reserved two minutes for rebuttal, if you'd like it then. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in support? Anyone? Go ahead.
Since I was here anyway, and I'm in a district that loves my chickens, so I would like to speak in support of this bill. I have only had one problem in my district, and that was dealt with very effectively, and it was a chicken wandering on the sidewalk. The owner was made to be known that that was not part of what the regulations were, and he's back in the yard where he belongs. I will tell you, I have an awful lot of neighbors who are thrilled to be able to go out and get an egg in the morning from their backyard. And I also had the interesting experience of having a settlement officer from one of the universities in my district call and say, "I have had someone ask if they can bring their chickens when they move to Nashville." And I said, "Absolutely. We've got a law, and it's okay." So it's something that's appealing to people from other cities. So I think it has been a very positive thing. I think it's consistent with Nashville's goals of sustainability and good health and many of the other things that Dwayne referred to earlier. The emails that I have been receiving have been generally very supportive and responsive of that from all districts all over Nashville, including some that currently are not allowed to have chickens. The few that I have gotten that are in opposition refer basically to three things: noise, wandering chickens, and roosters. And I will tell you, I've walked every street in my district, and I never heard chickens, and now I'm discovering how many there were there, except for that brief moment when they lay their egg. They're really quiet. They're much quieter than dogs are. That may be a fact you didn't know, but I learned that in the process. And wandering chickens or roosters are not allowed under the current ordinance. So, I mean, that's not going to change if we spread this to other parts of town. It won't suddenly mean that it's okay to have wandering chickens or roosters there. Those should be being taken care of by Animal Control in all parts of town regardless. So with that, I would ask you to go ahead and pass this, not to defer it. I think that there are enough parts of town that have shown that it can work well. I think most of the people who are, ran out of my tongue. They need to, to look at the example that the other districts have shown. I think they're afraid of something that they remember from large farms with many animals, and this is not what we're allowing. It's a limited number, and I think it's appropriate. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support?
I agree with everything Council Lady Allen said. Pete, go.
Anyone else in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Chair Clifton, Chair McLean, Vice Chair Clifton, Councilman Hunt, and esteemed members of the commission. Council Lady Karen Johnson, yes, I'm one of the council members from the southeast area of Davidson County, and I'm here speaking on behalf of council members Dominique Potts, Bedney, Dowell, DeVal, and myself. The facts are, there is much work that needs to be done to educate the entire quadrant of the county, which is the southeast area of the county. This past Tuesday, by all southeast council members, our vote did not change, and the feedback we all are receiving from our constituents is overwhelming to keep our districts opted out. We respect the East Nashville, UCAN group and their efforts around sustainability, but our area of the city has not been given the same level of education that East Nashville, West Mead, and Green Hills received in the two years leading up to the 2012 vote on this legislation. Councilman Tony Timpeny in District 16 was one of the council members that failed to opt out at that meeting due to not expressing that he wanted to be opted out procedurally in a timely manner. His district has the second highest number of complaints. Councilman Buddy Baker, however, is among the opted-out districts, and he has the highest number of complaints since the legislation passed with the opt-out. These two districts prove our point in that southeast, there is still work to do to educate the many people who live in our area who, right now, are saying they wish to remain opted out. My goodness.
I'll give you 30 seconds.
Okay. There's 280 complaints, 245 permits issued. Our concern is the Health Department and the Coast Department are stretched thin compared to 23,600 dog complaints they had. This will increase the need to have an additional inspector. I am here today not to ask for a disapproval of the bill. I understand the sponsor, Councilmember Bennett, is in the driver's seat, and our constituents clearly cannot get around that. We would prefer more time, as was asked at this past Tuesday's council meeting, to encourage a deferral. But at this point, we know we cannot change the decision that's going to be made today. So just to set the record straight, we're all for sustainability, but it's clear from the maps that you all have in front of you that there is still an education issue that needs to take place in our area of the county, and I thank you for hearing me today.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, Council Lady Bennett, you have two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, sir. Just in response to what Council Lady Johnson had to say, education has been very important, and UCAN has been a wonderful nonprofit group that has worked very hard to spread the word, teach people what the legislation says, and how to be good hen owners, I guess is the best word to put it. They have had classes all over town. They have not focused on the Antioch area because it's not allowed in that area. It's very hard to educate someone when you have to tell them, "Here's the rules, but guess what? You can't have them." So they are truly excited to, for this to pass and for all the districts to be opened up so they can do education. And they already have a spring class set up for Antioch at this time. So they're really excited about educating folks, and I appreciate what the council members feel. But real quick, I'll run over, these are the net numbers that I was talking about, not the gross. District 12 opted out. They had five complaints over a two-year period. District 20 had 19 complaints in a two-year period. 28 had 10. 29 had 8. 30 had 8 complaints. 31, 12. 32 had 4 complaints. 33 had 4 complaints. So I think when you look at the sheer numbers of the number of dog calls in the last two years, the same time period, there were over 23,000 calls district-wide, county-wide, rather, excuse me, for Davidson County. So I feel like this is a good thing, and I feel like the numbers prove it's not this scary thing that can happen in communities. It is a positive thing, and we just want everyone to have the opportunity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So a motion to close the public hearing. So, a motion to close the public hearing. Motion second, close the public hearing, all in favor, right? Any opposed? Jeff?
No comments. Derek?
I live in the southeast area, and I, too, have some of the same concerns that the Council Lady Johnson had brought forth, and some of the things that she had mentioned, I do concur with because there is a level of education that needs to take place there, even experiencing some of these issues personally. So, I am not in favor of this recommendation from staff.
This issue just keeps coming up during my term. When I was, I'd represented council District 26, which is, you know, on the southeast side and live on the southeast side. Well, the neighborhood, some of the neighborhoods in that district, I would get a lot of complaints dealing with chickens. Now, some were, chickens were there, some were making noise. I think the regulation deals with a lot of that. Some of the complaints were killing chickens in the backyard, which I'm not sure, I had a question on whether or not this, the ordinance deals with the killing of chickens.
It doesn't allow it. It's not allowed.
It's prohibited, okay. Which is good. I think that's a positive thing. I think from a legal drafting standpoint, it's always clear to have one consistent law in Davidson County. I didn't like the exemption part. I voted against the chicken ordinance when I was on the council and was very adamant towards that, along with State Representative Janice Santani, who represented the entire south, you know, like a big portion of the southeast area. I'm not opposed to chickens. As a matter of fact, my family, you would probably not believe this, but my family, long descendants of farmers, and we still have a farm in Nebraska. And I think chicken, urban chickens, is a very progressive thing, so I don't want to seem anti-chicken. It's just that it was very challenging dealing with a chicken issue when I was a council member. So, I'm not really for extending this, especially if the council members from that area are opposing it, so I will probably vote, I will vote no. The one thing I do like is that it is more consistent from a legal drafting standpoint and clearer law that's Davidson County-wide, but I understand that being a council member and getting a lot of complaints from this area is a tough situation. So, at this time, I'm going to remain consistent with that and vote no. Thank you.
Andre.
I'm for the chickens, but also I'm for the education. I think that's a really good point, and I would think that the other council ladies' point about the people who are doing a lot of the educating, their hands are tied to go to a place that doesn't have that, it's not allowed. And I think that made sense to me as a balance, because I think that if we can equally educate everybody in the community, then everybody ought to be able to understand the rules and comfortably have chickens with their neighbors. So, with that in mind, I think I would support the chicken legislation to be countywide. Well, in fact, I'll move that we support this as recommended by staff.
Second. Okay, we've got a second. Stuart?
I don't have a problem with folks who have a differing opinion about the chickens. I have a district that is possibly the most supportive of many of this ordinance, and of course, we have it now. So, to me, I guess it's mostly a planning sort of thing as opposed to a political decision or even whether council members get some complaints. To me, I might have done the very same thing that Councilmember Bennett did to get that bill through because there's now a record of how relatively few complaints there have been. And being results-oriented, I would have probably done the same thing that she now regrets because I'm not sure where the votes were. But from a planning point of view, looking at how we use our resources and how we have council districts that are arbitrarily divided up and who's to say exactly what address is what district, it doesn't seem to be a big question about, from a planning point of view, whether this needs to be a uniform act in the whole county, and that's why I'm for it. Thank you.
Hunter?
I just wanted to confirm that the Planning Commission voted to approve the previous bill prior to the addition of the opted-out districts. Is that correct?
I believe that's the case, yes.
Okay. So, we, as a body, approved essentially what we're being asked to approve tonight. And I agree with Stuart that this, as a planning and land use issue, it should be applied uniformly, you know, from our perspective, and we'll let the council decide, make the political decisions. So, I'm in support of the bill.
Bill? Thank you. There's an old song, "There ain't nobody here but us chickens." And if anybody thinks that there are not chickens in the southeast part of Davidson County, they are sticking their heads in the sand because I've been there and I've seen chickens out there. So, you know, that's good because education is maybe letting the neighbors know how to raise those hens out there. You know, I grew up with chickens, so I'm real prejudiced on this, and I raised them, and they're very educational. Not only do they supply, in this case, whether it's two hens or four hens or six, morning breakfast, but it's also educational for kids. Now, the only thing you're not going to educate them in this case is how you get fertile eggs because it's not going to happen. But the rest of it is really good. It teaches them responsibility, how to raise pets, those kind of things. There is certain value to it. In fact, I'll bet somewhere in the Constitution there says that you can have chickens. So, I'm very much in favor of this.
Councilman?
Well, you know, this has been an interesting discussion both times, and I'm here thinking about what happened the last time. As a matter of fact, I, if you remember, Karen, we had a long discussion about this, and I cast the deciding vote on the last chicken bill. And the reason I cast the vote, we had a long discussion, and I was totally undecided because I was trying to imagine myself living, how would I feel living where I used to live, 14 feet from another house with chickens in the backyard? The picture didn't look too good to me at that particular time. But remembering that I live in White's Creek, we have farm chickens. She's talking about urban chickens. There is a difference. So, based on that, I didn't want to sound like a hypocrite, so I voted for the urban chicken bill. And having listened to all the conversation, I am inclined to vote for it this time. I don't want to jump off the train after jumping on it. I don't want to get scarred up at one time. Thank you.
You've got a motion second to approve, all in favor? Any opposed? You've got two descending votes, so the motion carries.
We have a goat, yeah.
Okay, ready for Melissa? Ready for item number 7A and B?
We got them too.
I got it. Nope.
This could be a big issue next race.
I think Walter's term limits.
Are you term-wondering? You can't run on this. You can't run on this issue. That's too bad. Maybe I should run again. Oh, here we are.
All right, we're good to go. Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Melissa Sajid. The next item, the next two items to be presented are 7A and 7B. They are two related cases, so we're going to present those together. The first request that we're looking at is for the Cornerstone Church SP. It is for a preliminary SP to permit an assisted living facility and existing religious facility and its associated buildings. The second request is to cancel and amend portions of the existing Hickory Hills Ridge PUD. All right, so this is, just to kind of orient you, the area in red, all of that, is the existing Hickory Hills PUD. The area to the north that's outlined in white is the portion of the PUD that is to be amended. The area in red to the south of that white line is the area of the PUD that is to be canceled. Okay, so then we look at the area that's outlined in the thick black line. That is, those are the boundaries of the proposed SP. All right, so staff recommendation for the SP and PUD cancellation amendment are approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions. The zoning for the SP request is R-10, RS-10, RS-20, and PUD. The proposed assisted living facility falls mainly within the R-10 and the PUD areas. The zoning for the PUD request is R-10, RS-20, and PUD. The policies for these properties include suburban neighborhood maintenance as well as suburban residential corridor. Both proposals are consistent with these policies as the existing residential character will be maintained. These proposals meet three critical planning goals. The first two, preserve sensitive environmental features and creates open space, are met by leaving, part of the canceled PUD is natural open space where lots were previously approved. This area will also serve as hillside preservation. That area is pretty steep. The third critical planning goal provides a range of housing choices. That is met by introducing a new option into the area with the assisted living facility. Some background on how this case came before you. The PUD was initially approved in 1982. Subsequent revisions to the PUD leave us with what we have approved now, which includes 78 single-family lots. The reason for the current request is Cornerstone Church, they own a part of the PUD, and instead of building houses on their property, they would rather construct the assisted living facility, while the assisted living facility is not permitted in the R-10 district or the current PUD. So, that's the reason why they'll need to amend and cancel part of the PUD as well as request the rezoning with the SP. All right, so now we're looking at the SP plan. It consists of two lots. Lot one includes the church, which is kind of in slight orange color, as well as the associated buildings. Lot two includes the assisted living facility, which looks like two buildings, but it's actually one building that's connected by a breezeway. Let's see, as far as access, lot one has four points. Those are off Old Hickory Boulevard, North Greycroft Avenue, and Boyd's Hilltop Drive. Lot two will primarily be accessed through the points from lot one, so there will be a joint access easement for that. A landscape buffer is proposed on the east side of the property between the lot two and the existing residential. Water is available to the site from the west. There's a line running on Boyd's Hilltop Drive. Sewer is available to the north from South Summerfield. All right, moving on. There are several stormwater detention basins that not only will detain the stormwater on site for this project, but also they're oversized to address some of the issues in the larger area. In addition, the rooftop area is going to be reduced. I mean, essentially, you're losing 43 single-family, potential single-family dwelling units instead of having the buildings shown on this plan. We did receive conceptual elevations for the front of the assisted living facility. It appears to incorporate stone, Eiffel, and James Hardy siding. Signage for the SP will follow standards for ON, the Office Neighborhood District, which are fairly small in size and would not allow digital or LED signage. Then we have a couple of views of the property. There's the church. Here you can see the, I believe this is the Administrative and Children's Center, which is currently under construction. And then a view to the rear of the church from North Greycroft. All right, and moving on to the PUD, this is what is currently approved. It does include 78 lots. Access is from Falcon Drive, which is to the north here. This portion is currently unbuilt. The minimum lot size, oh, I'm sorry, 71 of the 78 lots in this plan were identified as critical due to its steep slopes. So, moving on to what is proposed, it will go down from 78 lots to 35 lots. The minimum lot size will reflect what was previously approved in the existing PUDs. The minimum lot size, there will be 10,000 square feet. Nine of the 35 lots have been identified as critical due to steep slopes. Primary access will, again, be through Falcon Drive to the north. However, there will be an emergency access, which will be gated off of South Summerfield. And here we have a view of the property from South Summerfield, and then another view looking out. This would be the entrance from Falcon Drive. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the preliminary SP and PUD cancellation amendment with conditions and disapproval without all conditions as both requests meet the land use policy and several critical planning goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. The sign is open for public hearing. I'll be allowed 10 minutes, and you can keep two back for rebuttal if you'd like. Oh, excuse me.
I defer to the council.
You defer to the council lady first.
I can talk fast. Right in time. I don't know, politician ever talks fast. Councilwoman Karen Bennett, I'm back for you again. Thank you for your last vote. Real quick, on 5/16/13, we had a meeting at the church to discuss this particular issue of doing the retirement facilities, the senior facilities. I had six people attend the meeting. I sent out mailers to 900 feet from the church, and only six people attended. I would say the majority were in favor. Went pretty well. We've continued with the process. We are going to have another meeting, if anybody didn't make this meeting or they have additional questions, next Thursday, the 16th, at 6:00 PM at Cornerstone Church. It will be at the rear of the church on the north side. I think that the biggest reason why I'm for this is that it provides, it provides, we have a stormwater issue that is just ginormous over in that area that we've been dealing with. The Interstate 65 just dumps water off into the subdivision, and we're really having a hard time with it. And I'm excited to lose the rooftops, to be blunt. I'm just so thrilled to be rid of the rooftops, if we can cut them back, and the fact that they're doing stormwater prevention to kind of hold off some of that, well, this is a heavily wooded area for the most part, and it really just, the water just comes off the hill into the subdivision, so that's a big issue. When we had the meeting and the phone calls and emails that I have received since then, the only real comments I've had is concerns about a landscape buffer. They have promised us a berm, a dirt berm and landscaping vegetation to help anybody from having to look out their back door into this facility. Also, they stepped it back off the property line from what they originally had planned to give a little bit more room. They've promised no blasting. The traffic will go out of the church's current entrances, so they won't be driving through the subdivision. That's probably the biggest point. One thing that I can share that I'm pleased with is there is another property owner, another parcel, that's between the church and the current subdivision, and they're having the opportunity to retain their property owner's rights for the lots that were planned on their property. And I think that's being very fair. That gives the church the rights to use their property as they wish, and it also allows that property owner to retain the ability to build a subdivision there. So, if you have any questions, that's really all I have. I'll turn it over to Mr. White.
Mr. White, as applicant, representative applicant, you'll be allowed 10 minutes and two minutes for rebuttal.
Mr. Chairman, if I can save the two minutes for rebuttal. At the front end, I represent the applicant, Jim Harrison, is here from Civil Science. He's been working on the engineering on this project for almost 12 months. Probably 12 months ago, there was an initial neighborhood meeting that Council Lady Bennett described. The plan has really not changed significantly since then, but I think she basically nailed all the different things that the staff commented about and why she is so supportive. But the big issues are, you've got a significant decrease in the rooftops out there, which is a big issue. Stormwater is a big issue because of the topo there and other issues, but you're going from 78 to 35 houses. Secondly, you're coming with an assisted living proposal, which is clearly a desired need and getting more and more of a desired need in Davidson County. The impact of the schools is basically negligible because of that. It's an actual decrease from what's currently there. As far as the proposal on environmental reasons, the council lady discussed that, but you've got huge buffer areas, you've got fair better drainage in detention than you have at the current plan. This is an old PUD. It's 1982. All these suggestions are an improvement, but I would suggest, too, that as the council lady commented in the closing, there lady commented in the closing, there's another property owner that owns about 12 acres of this old proposal. That's the real litmus test about is this a good or a bad proposal? That property owner is not opposing this. We spent probably two or three hours with that individual yesterday. Very fine people. They've got issues. We've dealt with them. They were primarily concerned about the environmental, the stormwater, the buffer, et cetera. That's the one most directly affected. They're not here opposing this. So we would ask you to support the staff position. It's basically our preliminary SP. We're amending and canceling part of the PUD, as you've seen in the staff presentation. It's good. Land use plan is consistent with the policy. It's supported by the district council person and the majority of people out there, so we ask for your approval. Thank you for your courtesy.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support?
My name is Jim Harrison. I'm with Civil Site Design Group, and I'm a project engineer. I just want to say that everything I've heard from staff and council lady and Mr. White, I agree with completely. We do have large buffers on the site. We are working with this new assisted living facility on the north side of the existing campus. Our intent is to keep these large natural areas, as much as 300 feet to the north of the site is preserved, as large open space areas. We want to do that for our residents that are going to be part of the assisted living. We also are continuing to commit, as we did in the neighborhood meeting about 12 months ago, that we will provide buffers for the neighbors, including berms and landscaping. We also want to reiterate for the record, and I think it's already been mentioned, but it's worth saying again, that we will have no blasting, just as we have that condition on the existing construction at Cornerstone Church as well. We have made a commitment and provided area, and will provide grading to provide oversized stormwater facilities and oversized detention. We plan to do that as well. One neighbor had expressed a concern, and we are willing to commit to provide daytime trash collection, no late-night trash collection or anything like that. That's important to our residents as well. We'll be doing that as part of our plan. But primarily, I just want to say we're in agreement with everything that's been mentioned at this point, and are looking forward to developing this as a positive addition to the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Roy Dell. I live at 51657 Stokely Lane in Old Hickory, and I actually attend services at Cornerstone since 2004. And the very first Sunday that I attended services here, Maury Davis actually took me out to eat lunch. He does that with almost all the new people that attend church. And the first thing he talked to me about was this vision of expansion in the future of this needed use. And so this is something that this congregation has been thinking about for a long time. It meets a need within this community, and they've spent a lot of time meeting with neighbors and making sure, to the best of their ability, that they've addressed all the concerns. Planning Commission is recommending approval, and I would hope that you would endorse that approval today. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening, Commissioners. Curtis Cohen, 509 North Greycroft. I support the idea of the assisted living, so and all that. I just don't want to be dumped on with stormwater. I don't want to be blasted, and I don't want to have to look out my back window and look up, and look up the back hill of my house and see a building. As long as they do that, I have no problems. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. And what else wishing to speak in opposition? Come to the microphone.
I'm Rick Lano, 705 South Summerfield Drive. I think I can live with the old folks home. There's no stopping it. There's a giant hole there. I know that's going on. But 7B, about this subdivision, that's right behind my house. This is a wonderful subdivision. The Bonnie Bray subdivision is where I live. It's an old 1960s. My house, 1962. It's the old Madison. One of the Mandrels used to live in my house. One of the Jordanaires lived just right down the street there, right at that Falcon Drive where they want to have this, go back in this residential area. These are large yards, acre yards, big, you know, medium houses, 2,500 square feet would be normal. A lot of them are over 3,000 square feet. It's a nice little neighborhood, and it's, people really like it there. And it's, and one of the things that we have going for us is that woods. It's a nice wood. That's old timber. That's 200-year-old, the same woods that's over there at Cedar Hill Park is the same woods. And have these people tearing it down. Maury, right away, I mean, they took a bulldozer, and they had to get a codes violation against them, a citation, because they're bulldozing those trees to just knock it down. Well, those aren't coming back. But these ones back behind my house, we have deer coming in our yard all the time. There was a golden eagle down there two months ago. Sat out there for a couple hours out in my backyard. I don't see that often, but this is wildlife. It's a really nice, it's exactly the same woods as they've granted Greenway to over there on the other side of the freeway. It just, it's what's between us and the freeway, and it kind of protects us. It gives us this nice, it's very pretty there, and we really like living there, and everybody in that neighborhood, I believe, does. I don't see a lot for sale signs. People aren't trying to move out. Would it completely change it to have these small houses come up here right behind us, tear down all this old forest? And the council people, they're talking in kind of funny conjecture of, oh, it's less rooftops. No, it's not. There's no rooftops there now. There's no one, no matter how you go about it, it's more rooftops than what you have now, and we don't have stormwater problem in our yard. That might be on down the street, down farther. They don't have that woods down on Falcon Drive. But there behind South Summerfield, we do. Well, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Richard Myers, and I live at 509 North Marthona Road, which is across the street from Curtis on Greycroft. We have the same numbers, but my frontage is on the other, on the other side street. So I'm across Greycroft. And my only, my only real concern is, is the same thing that Curtis has, particularly with the, with the view and so forth. Excuse me. And the fact that we have a wind buffer with all the old-growth trees and everything which is going to be gone. And so suggestion that I would make is maybe the stuff that you plant on the berm might be evergreens. That would be a much better windbreak and buffer. And the other, the other concern that I have is, we already have, on Sunday with their services, they have police and they cone off and they redirect the traffic and they cut off part of the traffic on Old Hickory, and they cut off the traffic on Greycroft. And there is no, there's no left-turn lane on Greycroft to get into their church. So the people that are turning left are either blocking the only lane that's going to the, I guess, north now. And if they're, if that's going to be the main entrance for this facility, then they really need to figure out a way to take a little bit of their property and make it, and make a turn lane on Greycroft so that the, the traffic isn't such a, isn't blocked. Because right now, on, like I said, on Sundays, which is not necessarily going to affect this facility all the, all the week, but right now, when they have their services let out, I mean, they literally block off the access to our homes with the traffic that they've got and the police that are out there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ellen Lano, and I live at 705 South Summerfield. My main concern, well, I have a couple of concerns, but one of my main concerns is that when we bought that house, at the end of South Summerfield, the south end, it is cul-de-sac, and that is very desirable to me, to live on a cul-de-sac. And when I saw that, it was a big selling point for that house for me, and I'm, so I'm very concerned about that, the possibility of that opening up. I do have concerns also about the traffic on Sundays, Wednesdays, Friday mornings. You know, they not only have the, have to have the police come out and park people, but the condition of the road going down on Greycroft, I mean, there's, there's major dips from all the traffic that's come through there. You know, I'd like to see more maintenance done if they're going to, you know, it's a huge church, and it just seems to keep growing. So I have a concern also about, at the end of my street, when they do build this facility, how about putting up, you know, a buffer for me, so I don't have to look at it if I don't want to? I mean, I really don't want to have to look up where there used to be old-growth forests and see a building. And so I would like to see a landscape kind of buffer. If they're going to go ahead and do this, I wish they would take that into consideration. There's a lot of people in our neighborhood on that street that have lived there for 40, 30, 40 years, and I mean, I think they're, that should be taken into consideration. They've lived there for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, applicant have two minutes for rebuttal.
Chairman, I claim members of the commission. I'll be very brief. First, with respect to the possible number of rooftops, it's very clear it goes from 78 to 35. It may not be there now, but that's what's been allowed. This is a PUD since 1982. Secondly, with respect to some of the issues about screening and buffering, not only have we committed to do whatever's been recommended and required by the Planning Commission, but we took notes today when some of the folks came to the mic with, I think, legitimate issues, like evergreen trees in certain places. We're not obligated to do that, but we're assuring you, we'll meet with those people either later today, or we'll meet with them and stay in touch to incorporate whatever those things we can. Those are good ideas. We may not be mandated to do it, but it's just like the infill matter. You take into account other people's concerns and try to address what you can. We'll do that. The last thing that I'll mention is, as I said, this plan hasn't been altered of any significance since 11 months ago. There's not just the public hearing today. There's a neighborhood meeting that's coming Thursday evening. Council Lady Bennett, then of course, has the public hearing at the Metro Council. There's been significant neighborhood input. She's given an incredible amount of her time to see this project through, and I think as she said, the vast majority of her constituents are supportive. Doesn't mean those that have got issues here today shouldn't have those issues addressed and discussed, and we intend to do that beginning this evening, but we'll stay in touch on all those matters. May not be able to satisfy them on every one of them, in that we're not going to leave the property virgin. Obviously, there's going to be a development, but for the extent that we can on issues such as evergreen trees and other things, we'll make that commitment. We'll do that. Thank you for your courtesy.
Thank you. Motion to close the public hearing.
Has it been called twice now, since he got called twice?
Beg your pardon?
Will I get to talk again since?
No, sir.
Has it been called twice?
No, sir.
Why not?
That's rules of the, of the commission that we've adopted. Thank you. Motion to close the public hearing. Motion second, close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Stewart.
This is, I think, an excellent proposal, and I think a much better use in many ways for this part of that undeveloped land than what's previously been approved. It's been 32 years, unless my math is wrong, maybe 34 years. I don't know what it is.
32.
32. And it's like a lot of places with unbuilt PUDs, people either didn't know or forget it's there, and it's kind of like a shock. When we bought our house, we, we saw a nice area across the street that was not built. And the first month I was elected to the council, I got a call that the Sisters of Mercy were moving just out, out of, out to Donaldson, almost out of the county. And this great green area was going to become apartments. It's, you can't even see downtown. You can't even see downtown from Donaldson. But anyway, they were leaving, and I remember the shock when we all in the neighborhood realized that, you know, this area that's been a playground for the, for the school is going to be built on someday. I'm making a point here. I'm not, I'm not opposed to Donaldson. I like, I like Donaldson. And the point is that we, even though there was a right to develop, it's still a real shock to folks when they see that this area that nothing's on is being talked about as rooftop. So I get that. It was, ours worked out pretty well, although there's an awful lot of multifamily over there, thanks to Mr. White. But it worked out well. We like what's happened. But I get their point, that this would be so much better with, with the, the forest. It's not going to happen because of property rights, and it, it's just not going to happen. Something's going to be built there, and I do think the church has probably made a very wise choice in terms of what the needs of the community are. So I'm, I appreciate Mr. White saying that they'd be willing to listen to input on, on parts of this, but I think it is a good plan, and we'll be supporting it.
It is a good plan. The only thing is, I would like to take Stewart out to show him where Pinions and Ben Road is. It is still in the county.
You can't see downtown. It's not really, it's not really.
Counselor?
No comment.
Andre?
Well, I actually have a few suggestions or ideas which maybe have been discussed already with planning staff. We talked about stormwater a lot. I just want to throw it out, if pervious concrete is a possibility or some pervious surface to add to all these other detention issues. And then, this is more philosophical, but we talk about connectivity a lot, and I think about people who are aging and going to aging facilities, and they keep getting cut off. And is there any way to encourage the sites to connect further? I mean, if we're going to connect the neighborhoods, could we connect the people who are aging to the neighborhoods where there are children walking and bicycles and life? To me, that would be less depressing, so I just will throw that out there, if that were an option at all. And then, the other question I had was, times have changed. We have less open land. We have less trees as we have further development. And in many situations, we encourage more cluster developments where we have maybe the same 35 rooftops, but they're clustered in a way that further saves more green space. And was that gone over, or is that something that could be a possibility with a project like this, where we keep the developer and the property rights in place, but we still save more of the green area that is also so vital to our ecology and our people?
And to answer your question, I believe the main concern with the, the portion of the PUD that is to be amended, it's owned by a different property owner from the church, and the overall concern was to maintain the same number of lots that were previously approved on the existing PUD for their property. However, if you do look at the, the SP, a good portion of, of it is remaining open space. So, I mean, there is that, but for the, for the PUD, the overarching concern at the time was retaining the current owner's property rights.
Yeah, I'm talking about the blue portion. Is that?
When you were talking about clustering the subdivision, I assumed you were talking about this portion, which is the amended planned unit development. A cluster lot subdivision was not discussed at that time because we were amending, or the applicant was requesting to amend, an approved PUD, one that was already in place. So the concern there, because this portion is owned by a different property owner than the portion that's being canceled by the church, was to essentially retain the same number of lots that had previously been approved, so that if they wanted to come back and develop what they had previously approved in 1982 and with those subsequent revisions, that they would still have those rights. It was, I think, a compromise between Cornerstone Church and, and the property owner for the other portion of the PUD.
Well, I might suggest that to the councilwoman then, to consider in the future, once this does really get head toward development, that that might be a possibility to compromise some more, but, but keep the property rights and the rooftops that we're talking about.
Greg?
Derek?
I understand, but I think this is a good plan, and it addresses a much needed service for the community, and I plan on supporting it.
Jeff?
No comments.
Is there a motion? Motion second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're now ready for item 10A and B. Jason?
Okay, item 10A and 10B are, will be presented together. 10A is a request to rezon, or zoning request, and 10B is a request to cancel planned unit development. The request, this is out off of I-24 and Old Hickory Boulevard. The request is a zone change from Office Limited Commercial Services and Commercial Limited to Agricultural and Residential and CS and PUD cancellation. Staff's recommendation is to approve the zone change and PUD cancellation. The existing zoning, again, is OLCLCS with a commercial PUD. Why it has the base zoning of OLCLCS, the development on the property is actually regulated by the planned unit development. The planned unit development is on the right, and I apologize that that is very small, but it's a very large plan, so it was hard to get it all on there. So at the top, you can see this is an office portion, and I highlighted this just so you could see that this is a very large hillside. And so it has approximately 61,000 square feet of development rights on the steepest area of this. square feet of development rights on the steepest area of this property. At the bottom, closer to Old Hickory Boulevard, you have various commercial uses approved, including a hotel, there's some office, restaurant, and retail, and this is the area that includes, that's more flat and more appropriate for development. And that portion of the PUD is approved for one hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty square feet of all those types of uses. And so the total floor area in the PUD is one hundred and eighty-one thousand, fifty square feet. Proposed zoning is AR-2A and CS. The top portion, which is approved for the office, which has all the steep hillsides, is approximately seventeen acres, and that is what's called to be AR-2A, and the remaining portion, which is a little over seventeen acres, is proposed for CS. The policy is commercial mixed concentration, this policy promotes commercial development as well as residential, it's an intense land use policy, so it permit a high density residential, and it also permit a medium to high density, or high intensity office and commercial uses. If this was to go through a policy amendment today, it's likely that the area that's proposed for AR-2A would be in a conservation policy, and it's also likely that when this was, the policy was done at this previously, is that it recognized the fact that there was a commercial PUD there, even though it had steep slopes and would probably be more appropriate in a conservation district, so it just recognized the existing development rights under that PUD. Has some views of the site, and staff is recommending approval of the zone change and PUD cancellation, because the AR-2A district will promote less intense development on the top of the hillside where development is not as appropriate, and would permit development on the southern side along Old Hickory Boulevard that is more appropriate. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. So item is open for public hearing, applicant be allowed ten minutes, and keep two back for rebuttal if you'd like.
If you could go back one slide. I'm Roy Dale with Dale and Associates, and I'm representing the applicant on this, appreciate the opportunity to speak, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. As Jason had mentioned, there are steep hillside on the back of this property, predominantly the area of the zone that shows OL and commercial PUD. This PUD is very old, I don't know that we had the steep slope requirements that we have today, but actually removing that and putting it back into AR-2A is more consistent, I think, with a future land use policy if you utilize this property. You'll notice on either side of this site, it is zone CS, and the center of its zone CS today, so we're just trying to basically concentrate any development on the front of the property that's consistent to the properties around it. I know there are a couple of ladies that are here today, I know them, and I've tried to speak to them out in the hallway, they own a parcel that's adjacent to this, that is the R-15 parcel that's sort of a remnant here, I think they have some concerns that they want to speak to you about. I'm going to reserve two minutes, I guess, to talk about whatever is discussed, I've had a discussion with the council member, I've had a discussion with them, and I think that there's things that we can do to satisfy some of their concerns, but again, the planning commission staff recognizes, as I guess Stuart Clinton had mentioned before, you know, the county has certain areas that have resource value, this property and its location and its proximity to this interchange, you can see it's fairly highly intensely developed here, although there is one or maybe two residential parcels that remain, ultimately, this area is going to be more intense, and as it should be, however, you can't see downtown from it, it is still in the county. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in support?
I'm Peggy Schroeder, Dot Nickens and I own the parcel that is adjacent to it.
Where's your address?
Well, the address of the property is seven.
Oh, your address.
Twelve twenty-five Dalemere.
Okay, thank you.
We own the parcel that's four point ninety-nine acres adjacent to this property, and I've been there with all of the zoning, we were with Mark Parrish when he had this made into a PUD, and with a PUD, I know the zoning is different now, because I've been out of this business for a little while, but there's some control over what you put there, and when this zoning, if it's lifted, then it leaves these people to, I'm afraid we're going to be sandwiched in with hemp hills, buses, and then theirs over here. And here, we've got the parcel, five acres, that's going to be right in between, because the hemp hills already said something about parking on the lot next to us, the buses. And this was supposed to be a really nice development, they've gone over across the street, I was told, no metal buildings, there's metal buildings all over it, I'm going to check that and see the restrictions on that, but we wanted a really nice commercial development out there, it's at the I-24 exit, and it just looks like they're wanting to go down on the zoning instead of making it better. To the front now is CL, which is kind of controlled a little bit, and CS, I understand, they could just go ahead and put all their buses over there, garages and everything. So we have tremendous interest in this.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in support, anyone wish to speak in opposition? Mr. Dale, you have two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you.
Two minutes to rebuttal.
Okay, thank you. As I'd mentioned, I'd spoken to Peggy, part of her coming up here today, she has a lot of questions, some of her concerns, I don't think it even could occur in the proposed zoning, I think one of her concerns that she could have mobile homes in the AR-2A, for instance, there are some intense uses that maybe have to do with buses or trailers that she probably can't even have in CS, that may have to be an industrial or SP industrial. So this matter, based upon our timeframe, we need this to be heard at the March public hearing, and it is a PUD that's being lifted, so the planning commission has to make a recommendation before it can go on first reading, but I've made a commitment to her, and Councilman Hunt is actually their council member, that as this goes through the process, I will sit down with them, I will have the property owner that's going to be working on this site sit down with them as well, and we'll try to work out any issues that they have concerned about, I think we can satisfy those. If they do remain as a residential parcel, and if you do develop this property, there are buffers that are required through the code now that's going to protect them, but ultimately, I'm sure that that R-15 property will be absorbed into the properties adjacent and around it. So, planning commission has recommended approval based upon good land use policy and principles, I would ask that you would support the staff, make a recommendation of approval so that this can move along, and then I will work with the council member in this political process. Thank you.
Motion to close the public hearing. Motion second, close, is all in favor? Any opposed, councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I've had a discussion with the ladies that own this property, as well as Roy, and it appeared to me when I was talking to them, they had one concern about the AR-2A part and to what goes on that piece of property. I don't know whether there's anything that can be done about hemp hills, and that's the property she's talking about, putting the additional buses parking on that, because they already own it, and I think it's zoned for that. But I do want to work with Roy and both of the ladies to make sure that the AR-2A portion which she's concerned about is not sometime be designated for trailers, I think that's the concern that she told me about. I'm looking at, and hopefully we can come up with some other destination, or SP, or something that will prevent trailers from going, and maybe some kind of NCO on that, since it's so steep, I think he told me it was very, very steep, we may be able to put, and you have to tell me what we could put an NCO destination over to prevent anything from being built on that hill, or put trailers on it. So that's why I'll be working with Roy and the ladies to find out that we can figure out how to do that. So, I'm going to support this particular project at this time.
Phil.
Let me carry one of your thoughts just a little bit further. Was there any discussion on another zoning like SP, for instance?
No, there was not.
Why not?
The policy doesn't technically call for a SP or a PUD-type zoning, it can be done through a straight zone change like a CS or something like that, so that wasn't discussed, and also for us, it's kind of a trade-off in that you're getting something that has a lot of development rights on something that's not appropriate for development, you get a trade-off is that that's going to AR-2A, which is a very less intense development or zoning, and it permit the maximum number of residential units that permit on seventeen acres is eight, so it's a lot less intense.
Just for everybody's benefit, would you just kind of say what could be on the agriculture zone area, what could go in there?
It permits residential, it permits agricultural uses, it permits churches, there's a variety of uses, majority of the uses are, a lot of them are outside of residential, or special exceptions, or accessory, or permitted with PC uses, which would have to go meet certain conditions, the special exceptions would have to go to the BZA for approval.
Okay, well, I think this will be in the hands of the councilman there.
I've got another question.
Honor.
I just had a question for staff, whether there was any conversation about sort of a housekeeping amendment to the community plan to go along with this?
It's my understanding that with the national next, that this will become a community character policy, and it would go into a conservation policy.
Okay, great, thank you. And then the second question is, you mentioned, I think, one hundred and eighty-one thousand square feet of development was allowed under the PUD?
That's under the entire unit, correct.
And the CS district would permit a maximum of, does it say four hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and nine square feet?
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure the commission was aware of that. Thank you.
Stewart.
So the AR-2A, if it's rezoned to that, does or does not permit trailers now?
The PUD does not permit trailers.
And it controls without regard?
Correct.
And it's not going away, it's just the base zone?
No, the PUD is proposed to be canceled, so it will go away, so then you would just have the AR-2A base zoning without any overlays.
And what does that base zoning allow in terms of trailers?
It would permit up to eight units, so if somebody wanted to put trailers, mobile homes up there, it could be eight, eight units, or eight trailers, on seventeen acres.
Okay, so not a lot of trailers?
Not a lot.
Stewart?
Mm-hmm.
Jeff? No comment. Greg? No comment. Andre?
Councilman, you have a question?
Yes, I did, I want to go back to the point, we was talking about how steep that parcel was, say, AR-2A, is that, like a lot of areas out there in my district, is it too steep to build on, or could it be put into an NCO?
You know, I guess you could build anything, if, I mean, that's, but I think it'd be very difficult to build, I mean, if you look at the, if you look at the site plan, I mean, you can see how they had to route the road around, to kind of work with topography a little more to keep it from being too steep, so, you know, a single-family home or something would probably work out fine, but I just don't see it as developing as anything intense, and if, you know, if somebody did want to put mobile homes there, I would say eight mobile homes would probably not even be visible, it's a heavily wooded property, and you'd have to get a road up there, so you'd have to do a subdivision plat, so I think it would kind of, my opinion is that it'd be infeasible.
Well, that's what my interest about it, to try to look and see if there's another zoning that we could put on it, because the fact is, what it's got to zone for now, potentially the AR-2A, is suited, because all he wants to do is put cows on that particular portion anyway. So, looking at putting cows on that, there are probably some other areas that we may be able to zone it, to prevent trailers, or prevent anybody from building on that piece of property, and in an NCO, you can still put cows on it, but you can't build on it.
Well, that's a policy, so I mean, a policy would still, a natural conservation policy or conservation policy would still permit development, but it's very low intense, so like, single-family home, something like that would work, but it doesn't promote high intensity development like a subdivision, you know, with fifteen lots or something, that'd be permitted under an RS or a different district like that.
It would permit five tractors, I mean, five trailers on it, would it? You could put five trailers on an NCO?
Well, the NCO is a policy, so it would support something low intensity, I mean, if somebody wanted to put, you know, whether it was a house or a mobile home, I mean, to us, it's, I mean, it's different in the zoning code, but it would still be a less intense use if it's one to eight mobile homes or houses.
Okay, well, that's good, well, I'll just work with Roy and the ladies, and we'll see how we can figure it out.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Can you show us the proposed, the one we'd be voting on? This is what we're canceling, right?
This, there is no plan, so this is, this is, this shows the plan that's approved today, that was approved in nineteen eighty-eight, and this will go away with this amendment.
What are we talking about, in the top blue would be the AR-2A, and the bottom blue would be CS, is that what we're asking, being asked to vote on?
Yes, that's correct, this would be AR-2A, and the C.
There it is, that's what I was.
All up here, and then that would be CS.
So that's what we're proposing to tonight, that's what we're talking about.
Correct.
I know it's that we're already trading off property values, but, I mean, or property rights, but is, was there a discussion in making that CL instead of CS, is that, did you all consider that, or is that, is the trade-off to get at CS so that you could reduce what's being done on the hill?
We didn't discuss it, since the policy supported CS, and then we saw that, you know, the top part was going to AR-2A, it didn't come into discussion.
Okay. And can we, in doing this, just because it's a zoning, we can't say we do it with the caveat that they couldn't put trailers, that has to go, that has to be the council person to do that, is that right?
That's correct, it would have to be some other type zoning or something.
We can't approve it as long as it doesn't have, I mean, we can't say the use, okay, I just wanted to ask.
Anyone else, is there a motion?
Move approval of staff's recommendation.
Motion second to approve staff's recommendations, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Dwayne, we're ready for item thirteen.
Got thirteen, sixteen.
Thirteen.
He said what he had to go, thirteen and sixteen, go.
Oh, really? Yeah, I bet that, but I'm not the same, I don't.
Item number eleven was deferred to.
Would you come to the microphone where the commissioners could hear you?
I was asking about eleven.
No, to the microphone, please, sir.
I was asking about eleven, when you immediately said thirteen, I wanted to know about eleven.
Item eleven was deferred until January twenty-third.
Could nobody even hear y'all deferring things at first?
We went through the agenda on the very first for items that were deferred, that was read out as item eleven and the date that it would be heard, so.
Well, just to be aware, we didn't get the original notice, we were the two most outspoken people at the same meeting.
These things, the deferrals come up at the last minute a lot of times, so that's a chance that you take of coming down here, but we did announce at the beginning of the meeting that it was deferred.
Could nobody even hardly hear y'all at the first of the meeting. It was some guy finally come in later on.
We're ready for item number thirteen, Dwayne.
Can you come back on the twenty-third?
It's kind of here, take it from the other end.
Well, it's like not getting the original notice, they don't want to hear it.
Mr. Chairman, this is item number thirteen on your agenda, this is a requested rezoned property from the current designation of RS five.
This is a requested rezoned property from the current designation of RS 5 to one of RM 15-A. It's for 18 properties located on the south side of Trinity Lane. This north side of the block is located between Lishy Avenue and Jones Avenue, but in a broader sense, it's west of Dickerson Pike and east of Ellington Parkway. Staff's recommendation is to approve. As I mentioned, the current zoning is RS 5, but you can see the surrounding context. On Trinity Lane, it's got CS or commercial zoning to the west and it's got a pocket of CN at the corner of Jones and Trinity to the, to the east. It's also got office zoning, and then RS 5 zoning to the south. The policy guiding zoning decisions in play is neighborhood general. The entire portion requested to be rezoned has got the neighborhood general policy, which calls for a variety of housing types and layouts. The proposed RM 15-A district is a design-based zoning, which requires new development to place buildings within the Build 2 Zone, parking in the rear. It also manages access points along the corridor. The RM 15-A zoning district also has maximum height regulations of 35 feet, has a setback requirement along the rear property line, as well as a landscape buffer required along that rear property line adjacent to the RS 5 zoning. The RM 15-A zoning district is consistent with its neighborhood general policy. And in conclusion, staff is recommending approval, as this RM 15-A zoning district also supports three critical planning goals: supports infill development, provides a range of housing choices, and creates walkable neighborhoods.
Who's the applicant on this? Thank you. Okay. The applicant will be allowed in 10 minutes. This item is open for public hearing. If the applicant's here, they'll be allowed 10 minutes. The applicant in the audience. Okay. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Honorable Chairman.
State your name and address, please, sir.
Trent Burton, 417 East Trinity Lane.
Thank you.
Honorable Chairman, Commissioners, Counselor, thank you for taking a moment to allow me to be heard. This particular proposal came about because of one residency, which is 414 East Trinity Lane, directly across the street from me. I say, let the facts speak for itself. Our neighborhood doesn't want this zoning to go forth. You're talking about 3/4 of an acre, each parcel. That's it. 3/4 of an acre with a six-to-eight-foot driveway ingress egress. But the facts that I'm talking about is from our police department, as well as myself. What I'm holding here is a four-page record just to that one address, why this young man is wanting this whole parcel, which they told him they couldn't just do his one address. They would have to zone multiple residency for the whole block. But I'm here to say, multiple residency doesn't work. What we have here is from Sergeant Fisher of the Community Liaison Officer. These are the things that are going on with multiple residency in this location at his address. We have disorderly conducts. We have bribery or burglary. We have theft. We have, there's 51 different calls to this one residency. And I'm in favor for multiple residency. It's just our location and his particular, it's not going to work just due to a crime. There, if, I would be willing to satisfy with this. If he doesn't manage his property and he wouldn't let somebody else come in and manage it, to where we could maybe increase revenue, but he doesn't do any background checks. I don't know if I can have a few moments extra, since you granted 30 seconds longer. Chairman, may I?
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak in opposition? And the applicant is not in the audience. So, motion, close the public hearing.
Motion second.
Motion second, close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Phil Ponder.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to hear if it's possible we could defer this, since we don't have the applicant here.
Is there any legislation that says?
I don't know whether, I don't think there's a bill filed. No, yeah, you could defer this.
I move to defer this two meetings.
Excuse me, the option 10 is here.
Well, why didn't he come up?
If I can clarify, this gentleman, Peter, was the initial applicant. We informed this applicant that we would not support a rezone of just that one property, 414 Trinity Lane. We were in touch with the council member and informed him of this, and the council member then sponsored the application to rezone the entire block. So, Councilmember Scott Davis is actually the applicant of this zone change.
I renew my request to defer two meetings.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just going to suggest, however the property owner may want to speak, he may not have understood.
Well, we've passed that right now. We're already closed the public hearing. We've got a motion and a second to defer one meeting, two meetings?
Two meetings. Is there any advantage for one or two?
Usually, if you're trying to get something done, you don't want two meetings for no particular reason. It sounds to me, Mr. Chairman, like we asked specifically for the applicant. Did we then ask for others in support?
We did.
Are they just, okay, so it's an understanding issue.
Yeah, it's understood, but the councilman is applicant and he's not here, so there is a request.
I'll amend it to one meeting.
There's a motion and a second to the one meeting. Okay. Motion and second to defer one meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. We are deferred to the next meeting. Dwayne, you're up again, item number 16.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one question. Will there be a public hearing on this matter at the next meeting?
Could I reopen that and add that to my motion?
Yeah, we would hold the public hearing open. Is that, okay, the motion, person made a motion and a second agrees that that public hearing would be held open. Yes. Good. All right, Dwayne.
This is item number 16 on your agenda. This is a request to establish a historic bed and breakfast homestay overlay district on property located at 754 Benton Avenue. Property is located in the Woodland and Waverly neighborhood. It's east of 8th Avenue, south of Wedgewood Avenue, and west Interstate 65. Staff's recommendation is to approve. The underlying zoning or the existing zoning is R6. It's located in a residential neighborhood, also sharing the same zoning. There's commercial zoning to the west of this property on 8th Avenue. As I noted, this property is located in the Woodland and Waverly neighborhood. This neighborhood is also a historic preservation district, as identified by the speckled area. The subject property is shaded in red and has a star on the top side of this slide to show its location within this historic district. A historic bed and breakfast homestay is defined as three or fewer furnished guest rooms for pay within a private owner-occupied, historically significant structure. Meals can be provided to overnight guests, and the maximum stay for each guest is 14 consecutive days. There are also standards in the zoning code related to historic bed and breakfast homestays. They relate to exterior alterations. They require that the bed and breakfast be owner-occupied, that only one parking space be provided, in addition to those that are required for the residents, only one parking space be accommodated on the site for each guest room, and that no signs are permitted, and that the owner maintain a registry and submit that registry to the zoning administrator every year. The uses that would be permitted with this historic bed and breakfast homestay overlay would be just that, the historic bed and breakfast homestay, as well as the single-family residence that the R6 zoning allows now. To be clear, this is a historic bed and breakfast homestay overlay. This is not a historic home events application. Historic home events are distinguished from the bed and breakfast. Historic home events are only permitted by special exception in the residential districts as granted by the BZA. That is not up for consideration today. So, the applicant, again, is only asking for the bed and breakfast homestay in this existing home at 754 Benton Avenue. In conclusion, staff's recommendation is to approve the historic bed and breakfast overlay, as it allows this historic structure to be reused in a productive manner.
Thank you, Dwayne. Item is open for public hearing. The applicant will be allowed in 10 minutes, and you can keep two minutes back for rebuttal if you'd like.
My name is Autumn Androtti. This is my husband, Jerry. And it's getting kind of late, so I'm going to tell you guys a really quick dinnertime story. So, this house was built in the 1870s, maybe 1880s. We're not for sure on the exact date. What we are for sure is the first streetcars in Nashville, where Douglas Corner is, were built to go downtown. This house was sitting on 8th Avenue. And I'm sure it was a wife who said, "No way, we're not tearing this down and we're not dealing with this commercialization." So, they lifted this house off of its foundation sometime in the late 1880s, put it on logs with mules, and rolled it up the hill to its current location. This house is not just an old home. It is a landmark. It is the oldest standing home in our neighborhood, and sadly, for the last 10 years, it's been crumbling to pieces. So, I have renovated a lot of old homes. That's what I do for a living, but I've never restored one. I have taken everything that has come out of that house, including the windows, the beams, some of the back of the house had to be taken out, and I've reincorporated that into the home. As a bed and breakfast, a 5,000-square-foot house is better use than just for me and my husband. I want to share it with you. I want to share it with your family and friends, and of course, all the wonderful tourists of Nashville. We hope to get your support.
In addition to that, I just want to share the fact that, obviously, it's a very personal project for us, but this is part of a trend in Nashville. We've seen a lot of modernization coming to Nashville. It's very exciting. We're both 10-plus-year residents of Nashville, and there's been a lot of exciting projects. It's been great to see Nashville grow up over the last several years. This is a project that takes Nashville back towards its history. It's part of something very special that Nashville has that we want to share with the visitors to this great town. There hasn't been a B&amp;B application in recent years. I think Dwayne can verify that. I believe 2009 was the last one. We've seen thousands of hotel rooms come to Nashville. We want to be hosts. We don't want to just open a hotel here. So, we're very excited to bring this, and I urge the commission to consider those two facts. We're moving forward with preservation, and we're also bringing a B&amp;B that hasn't been applied for in the last few years. Now, surprising as it may be, not everyone agreed with us. So, amongst our community, there was dissent. We've gone through an extensive length of discussions with members of the community. We heard a significant amount of opposition specifically around the historic home events concern that you heard Dwayne mention. So, what we've done is, we've worked with other neighbors in the area to agree to not pursue a historic home events application and do away with that concern, specifically so we can gain support for bed and breakfast and pursue that passion and interest. So, you'll see, I think you'll hear Mr. Walker speak on behalf of the neighbors who were concerned about this project, and he will specifically discuss the terms of the agreement which we've come to. Is there anything else that you want to add?
Please come. Spend your money at our home. We'll cook you breakfast. We'll pluff up the pillows. We'd love to have you.
We're going to save the last two minutes for more marketing and promotion.
Before the next speaker comes up, Dwayne, if you would, explain the difference between the B&amp;B and the events, historic events, what can be done between the two.
Well, just to give some clarification, there are two separate uses of property, and there are two separate permitting pathways. The historic bed and breakfast is exactly how it sounds. There are three guest rooms. It's almost like a, I don't want to call it a mini-hotel, because that's a bad connotation, but it's three guest rooms. That's it. There are no events that can be associated with that bed and breakfast. And it requires owner-occupancy. And certainly, it requires owner-occupancy. The historic home events is a permit that is granted by the BZA as a special exception in these residential districts, but it allows one to use a property, or at least a structure on that property, to host large-scale events. So, there's certainly a difference in scale and intensity between the two. Bed and breakfast, three guest rooms, as well as owner-occupied house.
So, the events would be such as wedding receptions or weddings or?
Could not be permitted with this bed and breakfast.
Those are some events that would have been, but not in this case.
They could be permitted on a historic home event property, but not with a bed and breakfast.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support?
Yeah. Hi again, Pete Horton, 726 Benton. We're just four houses down, and Henry's here, two houses down. That's a Subway restaurant, right there in the lower corner. So, this is not, right off 8th Avenue, a little over a mile and a half from the new convention center. But if you're looking for accommodations, there's a new place coming along on Division Street. Beyond that, you have to go to a corner of Berry Hill to find a small motel. So, this fits in with the city in terms of the historic district, our neighborhood. It's perfect to have an old building brought back for the 15 years we've lived there. When we first came, it was a daycare center. They had 25 to 30 kids, a couple of school buses parked along the side, and a parade of parents coming up, do U-turns. So, this is a tremendously improved use. Nothing against the daycare center. We enjoyed the kids. The Neighborhood Association benefits, because we have another place where we could have meetings, and the neighborhood otherwise has no public meetings. In terms of neighbor-to-neighbor basis, it's great to have a new, young couple. They've come to the neighborhood meetings. They were active in things. When the Neighborhood Resource Center had a street festival last October on a rainy day, Autumn led a delegation and won part of the Cookie Chili Cook-Off prize. One other thing is, being a young couple, they have family, growth in family in mind, and B&amp;B people are concerned about their property as a general rule, but you have a young family in there, they're going to be triply concerned about peace and order in the neighborhood and hospitality, and everything's going to be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Henry Walker, 744 Benton. I'm not really here in opposition. I am in support, based on the compromise that we have reached with the applicant. The staff didn't mention that this is next door to an existing bed and breakfast, which also has a special event permit and has been the focus of a very large and unfortunate amount of controversy for at least 10 years. The neighbors were concerned that we would be doubling the problems that we have had with the special event house over the last 10 years if we had another one next door. So, but our real concern was not with the B&amp;B operation. The B&amp;B operation at the DeMumbran House has not been the source of the problems. The problems have been the special events. So, all the neighbors got together, and I'm sorry we didn't get this compromise to the staff in time to have it part of the staff proposal, but I've got it here with me and I'd like to read it into the record. It's very simple. We simply would like to have a condition included in the bed and breakfast overlay, the condition being that a special event permit will never be issued to this location. Now, I realize that's what you call conditional zoning. I'm not a property lawyer. My, I will say that my law partner, Jim Murphy, drafted it. He says you've done it on prior occasions and other situations, and he said if everybody is in agreement, the applicant and the neighbors, and the councilwoman agrees to do it, it can be done this way. So, very quickly, it simply says, "The approval of the historic bed and breakfast homestay district is conditioned on no historic home events being permitted on the property within the historic bed and breakfast homestay district in light of the fact that the adjoining property is within a historic bed and breakfast homestay district for which a historic home event permit has been granted." That simply says that they can't get a special event permit at this location, because there's already one next door. Therefore, be it further enacted, that the following condition shall apply to the historic bed and breakfast. bed and breakfast home stay district. No historic home events shall be permitted on the property within the historic bed and breakfast home stay district. Because of this agreement, we don't have 20 people behind me getting up to argue about this proposed ordinance. Everybody agreed that even if they didn't like it, they wouldn't oppose it as long as this language was included in the ordinance. And again, it's all because it's next door to an existing B&amp;B with a historic event permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? CNN's motion, close of public hearing.
That's what?
Rebuttal?
Rebuttal? Yes, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to add one quick comment. As Mr. Walker said, we're in complete agreement with the compromise. The only note I want to make is that we do not want a deferral of this for any reason. We are on a tight schedule, and I've explained that to Mr. Walker as well. So we are in complete accordance on that one note. So I just wanted to put that before the close of public hearing. If there needs to be, whatever needs to be done to include this language, we are in support of, but if there needs to be a decision made based on what's in front of you today, we would ask that you do not defer this for another meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, motion, close of public hearing. Motion second. Okay. I'd like to ask our attorney, can we make that net a call by BZA if we put in there and still make application? BZA can override us.
Right. As to whether they get a bed and breakfast, oh, I'm sorry, a historic home event permit, that is the function of the BZA to decide whether or not they can utilize the property for that. What seems to be happening is that there's a private agreement that, it appears that there's a private agreement among the parties that they are seeking for the government to enforce, because we would be, if you put it as a condition on the approval, then we would be in a position to have to try to enforce that condition. Now, whether you put it on the condition, I couldn't advise you to put it as a condition. And the reason that I wouldn't advise you to do that is because the court is going to look at the record to see if it's a reasonable condition based on what the request is, and their request is a bed and breakfast. It's been stated on the record that the bed and breakfast in and of itself is not the issue. It is only whether or not they are to seek a historic home event. So I would be uncomfortable advising you because I don't know that a court would find that that is a reasonable condition given the information that's been submitted to you already in the record. If it is an agreement between the parties, certainly they can agree to whatever they want to outside of the context of this body. And in such agreement, probably could exist between the parties without necessarily being a condition of this. But I hesitate to, in fact, I couldn't advise you to implement such a condition where I know if it were to be challenged, the court's going to look to see whether or not it was reasonable based on the information that's been provided to you.
I have a question. So the evidence that the adjacent property is also a bed and breakfast and pursued and got an event home permit from the BZA, is that not good enough reason or evidence related to this application to be able to, and can a condition be put on an overlay district like this? This is my second question.
Okay. Let me answer the first one, the second one first. I think you could put a condition if you thought that it were appropriate to put a condition on, it's a zone change. So I think you have done that before on various zone changes. You've approved with certain conditions, and then, you know, amendments can be made to the existing legislation if legislation has been drafted, and sometimes that's done and sometimes that's not, and then there are rules that go with those approvals on conditions and disapproved without conditions and things like that. So I think you can do it in terms of just the overall, can I put a condition on this? But I think whether the court would find that persuasive or not, I don't know that that would be enough just because there happens to be another one on the other side. I do know that, I also noted that there was another one on the other side because I was a prosecuting attorney for many of the conditions that were violated, happened to be violated on the other side. So I do recognize that that was an issue for that applicant, but I do think you have to take it on a case-by-case and look at the facts that are before you for each individual parcel that you're charged with reviewing. And I don't know that you would take into consideration any violations or any problems that have been on the other parcel and hold those against a current applicant. I don't know that a court would agree that that would be enough to sustain implementing that kind of a restriction. I hope that answers your question to some degree.
I think though, based on her advice, I think that there might be two ways the commission may want to go. One would be to make it clear that, make a recommendation and have the council consider whether any conditions are on there based on the record that you've heard and the record of this, it's in a historic district and all that. The other option would be to have them consider rezoning this piece of property to an SP based on preservation, the conditions of the preservation district, the conditions of the home, the bed and breakfast home stay, the conditions of the existing zoning, and then exclude specifically any other special uses such as events, special events.
I think going to the zoning of the SP though is time-consuming, and they didn't want to defer, so that's probably not...
This is a rezoning. They could do that at council. The council could change the...
Change it to SP.
Could do that in the council process. It wouldn't slow it down. That's just another option that would be out there.
Rick, is there a cost associated with the SP?
No, the council member would basically change the zoning to a more restrictive zoning from what this is, and that would not be, that is not a cost.
Stewart?
Just a few thoughts. We didn't have this category until about 20 years ago, and it was sorely needed because people had to just hope they weren't caught because everybody wanted a bed and breakfast. And so far, the bed and breakfast itself, we have several around the town. In your district, in the 18th district, we have at least two. They are tremendous assets to historic areas. They have worked well. We have always gotten in trouble, it seems like, with the events, and probably should be taken out of our coat, but that's not our decision. I don't recall in the past this body taking on what is essentially a privately enforceable covenant. I can understand why all parties would want that, and I think the council has occasionally put something on and purported to have it as part of the ordinance. We've always been told as planners that we weren't doing private agreements. It's easier to enforce because the city pays for the enforcement, and that's what I guess is going on here. I'm all for this passing, and I'll wait and see what kind of creative ways we all agree to pass it. There's no planning reason not to approve it at all. And I'm in sympathy with what they're trying to, what the neighbors are trying to do. Maybe Rick has come up with a way that would not slow the process down. I'd be interested in the further discussion as to which of those, which some other option there might be.
Hunter?
Phil?
Counselor?
Yeah, I was just thinking, I can easily approve the bed and breakfast, but when it came down to the agreement part, it kind of reminded me of, going back to what Clinton said, it's nothing more than a covenant that neighbors make between themselves all the time. And when they have a dispute, it usually ends up in a court outside of Metro's jurisdiction. So I'm just wondering, if such a thing happened, what would be Metro's position in it, and it's an agreement between two private parties? So for that reason, I guess I do like the shocks. I'm out until we can figure out what's going on with that. Of course, I support the bed and breakfast though. It's not a problem with that. It's just the agreement.
Metro's not going to enforce a private agreement, and as pointed out by Stewart, it's from a planning perspective, there's no reason not to do it. So it's, I'll ask Rick, in some cases, our subdivision regs don't allow more than two duplexes, you know, in one area. And I know at present time, our regulations don't say that you can't have two special home events next door to each other, but if we were to come up with that, and maybe we need to study that, would this property be grandfathered in at our way to come under that new subdivision regulation?
Well, it'd be a zoning regulation. I think that, I think that it's already been discussed here, the entire special home event needs to be looked at, and there's issues with that around the whole city that need to be explored. I think, I mean, I think that the commission has debated and put on record some of its concerns. I think it's appropriate for this to be, and staff has recommended that this be bed and breakfast home stay. I think that it would be safe for the commission to go on record with that. And then we would continue to work with the councilman, council lady, and the neighborhood to find out any best way to do that, whether that's to change that to an SP, whether that's to encourage a private deed restriction between the neighbors and the property owner or whatever that could be done. I think there's several ways. And to continue to explore whether it'd be appropriate for the council to put a condition on. I think those would all be ways to get in here, but I think in any of those cases, we've explored several options that we can continue to share with the neighborhood and with the councilperson, and it's still, regardless, it's appropriate to have this as a bed and breakfast home stay.
Still got to go to council, correct?
Right.
Okay. Andre?
Well, when you were talking about the private people doing something, it seems like you want, if they're going to do it, they want something binding, and the bed and breakfast could voluntarily put a deed restriction on their property, right?
Right. That was my, that's what I was suggesting.
Sorry, I was distracted over here. Excuse me.
Greg?
Well, I mean, I like Rick's suggestion. I mean, if everybody's willing to do it, I mean, would the proper motion be to support the staff's recommendation that this be a historic bed and breakfast home stay overlay? Is that the proper motion? Well, I'll make the motion.
Second. You got a motion, second, to approve the staff's recommendation, is that correct? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It doesn't affect our vote, but I think that, I understand why that's not a great resolution for neighbors because somebody's got to pony up the enforcement in case, on contrary to what we think would happen next week, they decide to make it a home, you know, an event place. I do think Rick's pointed out several different ways that the neighborhood can be satisfied at the council level with some creative things, but I agree with what we just did. We don't need to set a precedent of incorporating private deed restrictions in our decisions at this level, so.
Council can place laws, but we can't...
They can do what they want, and they have lawyers for that, you know?
All right. Hunter, anything from the historic that you want to share with us?
Well, I do want to, because I didn't say it earlier with the subdivision regs, I really appreciate the staff working with the historic commission staff on this. I know they had some concerns before our last hearing, and we're happy to see the deferral, and we appreciate both departments working together on a good solution.
Philip, anything for parks?
Yes, we accepted a tractor as a gift, and we will use that definitely. We need it for parks. And the other thing, we approved the parking arrangements for Cheekwood for one more year with the hope that they will find new access to, in parking spaces so that we do not have to continually approve every year a parking plan for their neighborhood.
Anything for the courthouse we need to know about?
Nothing that you need to... Nothing you need to know about.
Okay. That sounds obvious. We ought to be suspicious, huh?
It's kind of quiet right now. We recovered from the holidays, so we need about another two or three weeks. I'll let you know.
Bring us back something next week.
Thank you, I will.
Rick, quickly?
Several things, and we're going to send you, Kelly, I'll email you the executive director's report, but it's got several things in it that are particularly interesting. Mr. Lehman and his staff are really in need of two Planner Twos. They're searching high and low for experienced planners, so if you know any, send them his way. And the design studio with Joni's resignation is looking for a Planner Three in the design studio. So we're looking, we're actively recruiting in those areas. There are a number of meetings next week that I want to make sure the commission's aware of. We're having another, a final, Green Hills area transportation plan meeting. I think that's on there Monday, January 13th. We also have a community plans meeting in North Nashville on the 13th, and we have a community plans meeting in West Nashville at the end of the month on January 30th. And next week, we'll have a series of meetings on the AMP. There's been a lot of publicity on those, but I'll mention those. I've included in the director's report a little more information on Nashville Next. The guiding principles, the draft of the guiding principles will be the foundation of the plan are in there. The steering committee, they've been vetted with the community, and they'll be doing final adoption on those at their next meeting to move forward. I've also included an overall schedule in there. We have started two special studies. We're working with Dr. James Frazier and Dr. Doug Perkins of Vanderbilt University on issues and recommendations related to gentrification and policies that will become as part of gentrification in terms of the Nashville Next Plan. We also are starting this month, working with the Board of Realtors with the suburban retrofit project. This is a project that'll utilize staff from, our students from Georgia Tech and from University of Tennessee, and we'll be looking at special situations, suburban situations for retrofit. These include areas, and they're detailed in the report, but you may want to look at those in Bellevue, Antioch, Bordeaux, South Nashville, O'Hickory, North Nashville, Wedgewood, the Nations, Nashville Community College, and Woodbine in particular for detailed design studies. And I think that's it. It also includes your administrative approvals. So that's it.
Okay. I'd like for the commission to note that we're, we've got through and half the time we did two, or four weeks ago, so we're adjourned.
And twice as much, twice as...